Good evening. I call this April 9, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commission to Order. We will have a silent invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Commissioner Walt Benson. And I will say, this being Earth Week and a lot of us celebrated Earth Week, Earth Day yesterday, my thoughts in my silence will be for peace on earth.
Please join me.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Item three, announcements and additions. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have one. It's under item 8D Technical Services, amendments to the Burn Leo County Water Wells Ordinance to be deferred to a future meeting. A vote is required for the change, and I believe that our Commissioners have other changes. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, we do have three items, so we'll vote on these one at a time. And so, an amendment to the agenda as stated by the County Manager, deferral.
So moved.
And that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Commissioner Benson, you have a comment?
Before we vote to defer, can I ask why it's being deferred?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, we're just deferring it. There's been some concerns and some questions, and so staff was wanting to kind of get those resolved and those questions answered so that we would be prepared to move forward with that.
Okay. I was, I've read through the ordinances, versions A and version B, and I was ready to support version A tonight. So, I would vote to not defer this. Madam Chair.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded and call for a vote. All those opposed, let's start with that.
Aye.
And all those in favor of deferral?
Yes.
And so that passes. That will be deferred. Item 3A, groundwater, excuse me, ground surface water, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Olivas, excuse me.
Yes, this is an item for late introduction. This is a rule that's being proposed that's going to be heard in the very near future at the Water Protection Board at the state level. So there is a need to be timely on this. So I ask for your consideration to add this to the agenda for later consideration and debate.
And I will second that. Any concerns or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
And that passes on a 4-1. That will be moved to 9A on the agenda. Item B, Commissioner Casada and Commissioner Benson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is the County Manager's Selection Policy and Process. Last meeting, it was introduced by me. The sponsor was Commissioner Casada. He exited the meeting after the other resolution was passed, and so there wasn't a second. So I'd like to bring it forward again. I do feel it's a cleaner, better process, more open and fair, both to the public as well as the county commission in general. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve this policy in light of the request from New Mexico FOG to the Attorney General to investigate the current process.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, I'm rising today to say that I'm going to oppose this addition. This matter's been decided. This commission debated this thoroughly at our last meeting, and we adopted a resolution. We have a search committee that is at work now, a meeting. They're staffed by a group of experts that know our county well, and they're doing their job. We're accepting applications through our county web portal, and we have our county staff actually in the process of scheduling interviews. This process is moving forward. We can't move backward at this point. I'm just going to go ahead and consolidate my comments on both of these. Item C as well. The request to add a discussion item on a opinion, opinion of one individual that was provided to this commission is something that we can all read. But that opinion contains personnel matters and other issues that are really not relevant or appropriate to discuss in a public meeting at this point. But I also think it's important to note, as I stated to start, this is a personal opinion. This is not the opinion of our county legal department, or the opinion of the county Ethics Board Attorney. Most importantly, it's not the opinion of the county's Code of Conduct and Ethics Board. And the reason it's not is because those types of opinions and legal findings require proof. They require factual evidence, sworn statements, testimony, hearings. What we have before us is rumors and innuendo, and that's really what both of these matters for introduction are. What I see happening here is we have two Commissioners that are dissatisfied with the outcome of a democratic process. This board operates by majority rule, democratic process. There was three votes for the resolution that we passed. That's it. That's how this process works. That's the system that we all agree to be part of. We have an obligation as responsible citizens to uphold those values, those values of democracy and majority rule. And in particular, those of us sitting up here on this board have an obligation to lead by example and show great respect for that system and the processes that undermine it, underline it. So I understand where the Commissioners are coming from. They're frustrated. They're upset. They wish the process had gone a different way. They wish that we'd voted a different way. I get it. I'll give an example briefly. In the aftermath of the 2016 election, I was devastated, as I'm sure many of you were. And I'm sure many of you were thrilled, right? We've all been on one side or the other of these fights where we're not always right. We don't always win. And that's okay. That's part of our system. But I didn't get up the next morning after that election and start making stuff up, living in an alternative universe, trying to put forward conspiracy theories and throwing out rumors just to see what would stick. I got to work, went back to work, started organizing, started thinking about running for office, working harder, working smarter. Now, in 2020, our twice impeached, many times indicted former president didn't extend that same courtesy and respect to our democracy that so many of us did. He lied. He launched conspiracy theories. He unleashed dangerous corrosive forces on our democracy and actually attempted to overthrow the peaceful transfer of power because he disagreed with the outcome of majority vote. That is not the appropriate process. We all have our rights to speak out. We have our rights to disagree and explain our disagreements, but you can't just make stuff up. So I just want to say that I am extremely disappointed in my two colleagues that have chosen to adopt, in a bipartisan way, the tactics of our former president. If you can't win, poison the well. Destroy the whole process. Undermine the elected leaders that you serve with, and by the way, in the process yourselves. I wish that we would have seen the two of you work with such zeal in your eight years or your four years on this commission to fight crime in our community, homelessness, behavioral health. We have serious issues before us that we could be working on, that we could be spending this legislative time that I'm using right now to debate a process that has already been approved by this commission by majority vote. So I would ask the two of you to accept the outcome of a vote that happened. You were all part of it. We had a debate, and we move on. We move on with the important work that we have to do. Let's get to work. I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to respond.
Commissioner Benson.
All right, Commissioner Olivas, you let us know your position on this. And I want to clarify, I'm not at all upset at losing a vote. If you haven't noticed here, I lose almost every vote that I'm at. This, this vote that I have issue with was determined in a rolling quorum. That's the issue that a fair and independent organization, the New Mexico Foundation for Open Governance, is calling on, not Commissioner Casada and I. New Mexico FOG, they've reached out to the Attorney General to investigate the rolling quorum, which is illegal. That is not democracy. That is not how democracy runs. A three-to-two vote happens all the time. It's not fought. In fact, Commissioner Olivas, you should take your own advice. In your first month on the commission, you and Commissioner Baca pulled back an ordinance and rescinded it that had already been passed by the prior administration. And you said elections have consequences. And then you started getting to work undoing laws that had already been passed. So you can, you can say all you want in virtue signal and compare us to other politicians that are very controversial, and that's not what we're doing. We are fighting for a democracy right here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, we did not submit that. I didn't get up in the morning and submit that complaint that came from FOG, went to the Attorney General. I was surprised to see it, actually. I've been complaining about, you know, things that have been happening on this commission since it's turned into a new commission. I actually brought one of these Commissioners to the Ethics Board, and Commissioner Olivas wrote an op-ed saying it didn't matter. And guess what? She was found guilty of lying to her constituents, and not only that, lying to Commissioner Benson to gain his vote, to pass a resolution on a hiring process, which is another thing I thought was illegal for this, this commission to be doing as a body. And then, never apologized, never came out publicly and told everybody, "I was found guilty by our own Ethics Board," never publicly apologized, never apologized, Commissioner Benson. Did she apologize to you, sir?
No.
Okay. And so, so she was found guilty of that. So sometimes consequences do matter, and sometimes the process does matter, and that is democracy. And in the next, and then in this next agenda item, we also didn't bring this forward. So if we're going to start discussing item 3B as well in our comments right now, we also did not bring this forward. This was going to be brought forward by our own compliance office because he is getting requests from staff members. And if you read this, and when we read this here in a minute, you will see how serious these allegations are. And if you have nothing to hide, and if you're open and transparent government, then what you'll do is you will, you will comply with this. And if, and if you don't want to, then I will make it an official request from the compliance office to move forward with this complaint, if that's what we have to do. And I will be the first one to hand over all my emails, and I will even give you my personal emails, my personal phone, so you can look through those to see if I have violated any of these code of conduct, code of conduct and ethics complaints that will be coming forward. And once that happens, that old resolution that you passed, it's not going to be valid. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we put something in place right here, right now, that we can move forward, which is, I think, fair to all, all, all the districts, to all of our constituents. And I didn't do any of these things, although I was called by many, many elected officials saying, "You're doing the right thing. You're standing up for your constituents. Thank you for doing that." We have not seen that happen in a while. That's my job to do that, whether they like it or not. My job is to stand up for my constituents, and that I made an oath to do, and that I will do for the rest of the eight months. And trust me, they're going to hate the last eight months of me being around.
Okay, point of order. I want to bring us back. I want to bring us back to the, excuse me, Commissioner, I have the floor. I want to bring us back to the question before us, which is a late introduction of a resolution because it did not meet the seven-day rule of getting in, so it needs a majority vote for this item to be placed on the agenda. I must say that the existing resolution that we have adopted two weeks ago is about a search committee to assist this commission in appointing our next county manager. It is an assistance. It is not the selection group. So it has, it goes further beyond what I think any other commission has done in terms of public engagement, a local search committee, a national outreach, which has already been advertised, and we are on a short timeframe of filling that position when Ms. Marga Spaca retires at the end of June. So I will say that I believe that the current process is, has been open, it has been inclusive, and it will continue to be. And I will, I would like to call the question on whether this should be included on this agenda tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And that fails. Item 3C, Commissioner Benson.
Yes, Madam Chair. Actually, I would like to take a point of personal privilege and, and read the said letter that Commissioner Olivas tore down. This is...
Commissioner, just, just for the record, the personal privilege, absolutely. You have a five-minute limitation on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This letter was sent to the entire Board of County Commissioners, as well as Julie Marga Spaca, and, and I will read it now. "Observance of Ordinance and Code of Conduct. Dear Board of County Commissioners and Madam County Manager, in recent months and most recently, several anonymous and informal complaints have been brought to the attention of the County of Burn Leo Ethics and Compliance Office regarding alleged incidents that, if substantiated, would constitute violations of the County Code of Conduct. While these allegations have not yet culminated in formal complaints according to the Code of Conduct, Section 2135, it is incumbent upon this office to inquire about those concerns proactively and to route them to the proper office for handling, investigation, and response. The County prides itself on fostering a culture of kindness and mutual support, striving to create a workplace where all individuals are free from retaliation or fear thereof. It is imperative to recognize that all county officials and employees are held to a higher standard of ethics necessitating strict adherence to policies, rules, regulations, and the law. However, recent occurrences have raised concerns warranting further discussion and education. Topics include alleged retaliation in the form of alteration of job roles, allegedly directing staff to override the will of the Board of County Commission outside of a public meeting, actions potentially bypassing county rules and procedures, including rules of Board of Appointments, alleged unauthorized direct communication, sidestepping hierarchy by directing and instructing non-reporting personnel. The adherence to the county regulations by elected officials, managers, employees, volunteers, and contractors must be a fundamental element of county ethical practices. Over the years, the Board of County Commissioners has carefully designed the Code of Conduct to guide our moral choices and ensure we make decisions in the best interest of the public and our county employees. The Code of Conduct guides the moral sense of officials, managers, and employees, which steers us to act with integrity and accountability, thus fully understanding and following these guidelines as proof of our dedication to serving the community and treatment of county employees with transparency and respect. In light of these concerns, it is crucial that we collectively reaffirm our commitment to upholding these values and standards that define our county. According to the County Charter, all legislative and policymaking powers of the county are vested in the Board, ensuring it has the authority to make decisions that shape the county laws and policies. The County Charter also grants the Board additional powers to respond to the needs of the county, its employees, and its residents, emphasizing the Board as a primary decision-making body within the county government structure. Also, the Board exemplifies the necessary role of oversight and safeguarding ethical measures that are essential to developing trust among county employees and the public. You, thank you. Hence, upholding and adhering to the principles for stringent non-retaliation reflects the Board's commitment to justice and transparency. Still, while holding such an important elected position, county Commissioners do not have individual administrative authority, thereby not permitted in any form, whether verbal or written, to issue managerial directives, give orders to or demand services from the office of the county manager, its staff, or any of their subordinates, whether in public or private. Conversely, Commissioners in line with their elected responsibilities and fiduciary obligations are allowed to and should express their opinions and provide recommendations concerning the administration of the county. However, County Charter provides the county manager and her subordinates with full discretion whether to implement any actions recommended by the Commissioner. Adherence to the hierarchical structure defined in the County Charter upholds the integrity and balance of county administrative procedures and allocation of authority. For all county elected officials, staff, and employees, it is crucial to have a thorough understanding of this structure. Additionally, a fundamental right of the county employees and all public employees is a right to express their opinions, concerns, and disagreements with any objective without any adverse action or retaliation. This right extends to communication of views, grievances, complaints, or related conditions for compensation or anything that could lead to the detriment of employee situation. However, it is important to observe these expressions should not interfere with the proper performance of their employment duties. While the county as a whole is immensely proud of county manager's accomplishments and constant care and respect that she has displayed for all employees, her recent announcement to separate from the county sits heavily on the employees' hearts and signifies a time of uncertainty and instability during this transition. Thus, initiating a hiring process without careful adherence to the Board's established appointment procedural guidelines or the Code of Ordinance's Article 7, Section C for Open Meetings Act's compliance leads to perceptions of non-traditional standards, lack of transparency, and uncertainty, not democracy, Commissioner Olivas. Rightly, to affirm fair and effective oversight, the Board must adhere to the Code of Ordinance procedures for selecting members of a board. It is essential to recognize that adherence to the Board's procedures for board appointments is not just a formality, but a process for transparency. These rules establish an unbiased structure for board appointments. Thus, any deviation from these guidelines can undermine the established Board's credibility and the trust placed in by the public.
Madam Chair, point of order. His five minutes has elapsed.
Madam Chair, this is not the chair.
Commissioner Benson, I do have a timer on, and that is the five-minute
Thank you.
limitation, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for bringing this forward. I have a couple of comments, and I hope everyone takes a deep breath.
Madam Chair, let me interrupt just a second. I want to verify the vote. We had a vote. Commissioner Barboas said yea. So did she? Okay, you didn't say nay. You said yea. So you mean nay?
Nay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the check. The letter in question, which we received from Rocky Gutierrez, our compliance officer, includes informal complaints, anonymous allegation, including personnel issues, Commissioners, and I take that very seriously, although we agree that it's important for complaints to be heard. Historically, even the Code of Conduct Board does not take anonymous complaints. So I think that it's a very, we need to think about this very carefully. The Board of County Commission meeting is not the proper place to take up personnel or ethics complaints. It truly is the process that is already in place, which is the Code of Conduct. So for these reasons, I believe it is not appropriate for the commission to hear this item on this agenda today, and I call the question.
Madam Chair?
All, the question has been called, and all those in favor of this item being heard later on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, because it's regarding this county commission.
Thank you, sir. And all those opposed to hear this on this agenda, say no?
No.
No.
And thank you. I know that people are passionate about this issue, but I do think we need to have a decorum and work together as we move forward on this very important issue. So thank you for your patience.
Madam Chair, if I could get, excuse me, clarification on who moved and seconded, please?
I moved. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may take a point of privilege, my name was mentioned in the...
Okay. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I'll be quicker than that. I just want to say, I've, since taking the role on Commissioner, I've been, and when I served as Chair, my house was shot at just an hour after me and my grandbaby were playing right in the line of fire. My neighbor saw people walking away from my house that they had shot at. That was, these things are serious. That was, these things are serious, right? Because that was, came from the highest level of government. MAGA, GOP folks influenced that person. And that person, Solomon Penny, will be seeing his day in court. It was clear that he was taking those directions from leadership on high. So these tactics to try and, you know, attack me, including two ethics complaints, the first was completely dismissed on its face. The second was de minimis, was claimed de minimis, which meant no further action was needed. So Commissioner Casades, lying continues, misinformation continues. But I went through those. We wasted a lot of county dollars and time and employees and resources over Thanksgiving. And I feel bad for the county who had to go through those unnecessary. And the Board made recommendations for us to solve these issues within the commission instead of taking them to that. So of course, there would be anonymous reasons and complaints now that have not. But I welcome, I welcome thorough transparency. That's the only way we have to believe in democracy. I welcome an investigation that is fair and thorough and led by our professionals. So yes, I want to name that the tension and the attempt to weaponize our democracy using our tools like ethics complaints and Code of Conduct to weaponize those against women specifically elected. I won't let you intimidate me. Let's do the process. I will be the first to say if something's found wrong. But I have, I won't be intimidated by these tactics that come from GOP, MAGA-type folks. And so I'm not gonna be intimidated. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, and we will move on to item number four.
Madam Chair?
Proclamations.
I would like to respond.
Commissioner, you've already used your point of privilege-
This is not a point of personal privilege, I'm asking for the floor. You can deny it. You can deny it in front of our audience here. I would like to respond to the comments about she's being persecuted by males in GOP. New Mexico FOG's chair is a woman, and they are bipartisan, they are independent.
And I'm excited- I welcome FOG GOP. I welcome FOG GOP.
I will call this to order, and I please-
I welcome FOG, I welcome you, please.
Please.
No, you don't.
My fellow commissioners, we need to stop this conversation and move on. I think people have had their ability to air their concerns. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner. And we will move on to proclamations. Okay, National Small Business Week proclamation, which is co-sponsored by Commissioner Benson and myself. Marcos?
Madam Chair and the commissioners, it's coming to our favorite time of the week, the National Small Business Week, which is sponsored by the Small Business Administration. So Economic Development Department loves our partners at the SBA and all the partners that work with them as well. And thank you for sponsoring this proclamation. And I'll let Michelle Duran from the SBA who's here to share a little bit about the SBA, and then we'll do the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. This is my fourth time here, and I, you know, become a regular here. So Burnleal County has supported National Small Business Week. And I've been with the SBA for four years, so that tells you something. We've got to get our job done. But a little bit, I wanted to quickly introduce the SBA, the U.S. Small Business Administration for the public that may not be aware of who the SBA is.
Michelle, I do want to ask you to be brief if you can.
Okay.
The proclamations and the rest of the agenda.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
It is just a federal agency dedicated to helping small businesses. Ninety-nine point nine percent of small businesses are, I mean, of businesses in America are small businesses. And it is a great time for everyone to go and support your small businesses, not only next week, which is National Small Business Week, but throughout the year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm personally grateful for the SBA. Three businesses that I've been a part of have been direct beneficiaries through the SBA program. So thank you very much. The paperwork is horrendous, but the final outcome is beyond amazing. So thank you. Whereas small businesses continue to play a significant role in the American economy, the small businesses across Burnleal County continue to provide job opportunities within the community, making up forty-four percent of employment in the state of New Mexico. The Albuquerque metropolitan area has approximately seventy thousand three hundred and eighty small businesses, which account for nearly ninety-eight point four percent of establishments in the community. And whereas, small businesses foster innovation, strengthen the community, and are vital to Burnleal County's economic landscape, contributing to its vibrancy and diversity. And whereas, when we support small businesses, jobs are created, and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, entrepreneurship continues to be one of the best pathways to the American dream, evidenced by the historic small business boom with a record sixteen point five million Americans applying to start a business since January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, including five point five million last year.
And whereas, by renewing our commitment to supporting small businesses, we can maintain our global competitiveness and build a stronger nation where everyone can be successful. Whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the program and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other governmental agencies. And whereas, Burnleal County supports and joins in this national effort to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the American economy and their importance in ensuring that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Burnleal County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April twenty-eighth through May fourth, twenty twenty-four as National Small Business Week, done this twenty-third day of April, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, and we have a proclamation for you.
And just real quick, if anyone would like to learn more, sba.gov, and you can go to slash N M for our website, or call our office, five oh five two four eight eight two two five. Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Proclamation B. Commissioner Olivas, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm really excited to be able to read this proclamation. Just a little background on this. I think many of us have seen the news reports based on national studies and research. New Mexico has been declared as one of the best, highest-performing states for the way that we administer our elections, election integrity, election security, voter outreach, all the great work that we do. And we have our wonderful county clerk, Ms. Linda Stover, up here to accept this award. And this, the work that was done wasn't just about Burnleal County, it was statewide. But of course, Burnleal County is a huge leader thanks to Madam Clerk Stover and her wonderful staff that is standing there alongside her. So I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, and then, Madam Clerk, if you want to say a few words afterwards. So whereas, voting is one of the most, one of our most sacred and important rights enshrined in the United States Constitution. And whereas, it was determined New Mexico's twenty twenty-two midterm elections were conducted more reliably than any other state in the nation by the Elections Performance Index Project of the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. And whereas, New Mexico's Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver has worked to modernize elections while expanding access, and the report noted that the rejection of provisional ballots was point zero two percent. Voter registration increased to eighty percent, and the average wait time statewide was three to five minutes. And whereas, thirty-three county clerks across the state work hand-in-hand with the Secretary of State, and in particular, Burnleal County Clerk Linda Stover, who oversees the most populated county in the state. And whereas, Clerk Linda Stover received the prestigious Achievement Award from the National Association of Counties in twenty twenty-two for efficiently administering large-scale elections for the twenty twenty election amidst a global pandemic. Whereas, Clerk Stover has concentrated on voter education campaigns, increasing awareness of voting options, routinely conducts post-election audits, and received recognition for working with APS by creating an All About My County Activity Book for school-age students. And whereas, Clerk Stover continues to innovate and expand voter education and engagement, this year launching a competition among local youth to redesign the popular "I Voted" stickers that voters receive when they vote via early voting or on Election Day. And whereas, we gratefully acknowledge the exceptional work by Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver and Clerk Linda Stover for educating, providing access, and protecting the right to vote. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Burnleal County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver and Clerk Linda Stover Day.
Do you have anything to say?
I'll keep it brief. Thank you, Commissioner, that's a real nice honor. And it is a wonderful thing to have Burnleal County recognized that way. But as the person that is the clerk of Burnleal County, that's all that I am unless I have these folks behind me. And this is a group of people that have done all these marvelous things that you're talking about. So when we get recognition, it's not just me, I'm the face of it. These are the people that work the hours, these are the people that do all the hard work that you don't see. We had that sending legal team behind us, Ken and Natalia, John Gubcheck, Auguste. There's several of them here. They were always there, Johnny on the spot to help us. So we've worked hard to achieve this, and we deserve it. But we did it because of these folks. So thank you very much.
Squeeze in. Like you're in a voting line. You're skewed. Just kidding. Okay, great, thank you.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just want to recognize the whole team. And just to your point, Clerk, to say that, you know, it takes good leadership to make sure our team gets to run smoothly. And our state Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver got her, you know, was here first as our previous clerk. So Burnleal County is building strong leadership for our voting, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item C, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have a... There we go. There it is. All right, this is the right one. So this is sponsored by all the county commissioners this evening. And this is a very important subject. I think you've all heard me speak about my past. So I don't have to repeat that. But this is super, something super important to me. I just want everybody to know, it just doesn't happen to women, it happens to men as well. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month, SAM, calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in every community. SAM aims to raise public awareness about sexual abuse, harassment, assault, and educate communities about how to be involved in prevention. And whereas, this year SAM's campaign theme, Building Connected Communities, calls on each of us to work together to prevent sexual abuse, harassment, and assault. And whereas, we believe when anyone experiences sexual violence, every community member is affected. We must strive to build more connected, respectful, and inclusive communities to promote our collective well-being and protect against the risk of sexual violence. And whereas, we believe all of our communities will be safer and stronger by making them more equitable for people of all gender identities, sexual orientations, races, ethnic backgrounds, ages, faiths, and abilities. And whereas, we must strive to create strong, connected communities that take care of one another and make decisions to ensure the safety and well-being of others to end sexual violence. And whereas, the Building Connected Communities Campaign is an opportunity for our community to join with others around the world in committing to prevent sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. And whereas, we join advocates and communities across the county in taking action to prevent sexual violence. Now therefore, be it resolved that Burnleal County Board of Commissioners acknowledges April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Sexual Abuse Awareness Month, done this twenty-third day of April, twenty twenty-four in Burnleal County, the state of New Mexico.
I just wanted to thank the commission for this proclamation, bringing awareness to sexual abuse. My name is Roman Verilla, I'm the Prison Rape Elimination Act Administrator for MDC. And with me, one of our longtime community partners, Carla Gallegos with New Mexico Sexual Abuse Programs.
Hello, my name is Carla Gallegos Ortega. I'm the pre-coordinator at New Mexico Coalition of Sexual Assault Programs here in Albuquerque. And I want to thank you all for acknowledging Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I know it's not a subject a lot of people like to talk about, but it is necessary. And we feel honored that you are acknowledging it, and it takes, that's the first step in combating it. So we are honored that you're thinking of it. Also, I want to shout out to Roman, because he is a great partner of ours, and he goes above and beyond his role in making sure that incarcerated survivors get the services that they need.
Thank you. I just want to, I just wanted to thank you for your work, because our survivors do need help getting through these things. So thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, and I noticed that Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver snuck in, and so we'd like you to come forward. And Madam Clerk had a recognition-
I just wanted to say welcome, I'm sure she got stuck in traffic. Just missed it that close.
I, I-
But thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and to the commission for having me here today. I am mortified that I'm late, but for those of you who know me well, especially Commissioner Barboas, has known me since sixth grade. I'm always late. But just again, sorry, I know you have a lot of business on your plate tonight. But thank you all so much, and thanks to the commission. It's great to be back in my old stomping grounds, even if not physical stomping grounds, but at the Burnleal County Commission. Thank you all so much for the honor earlier tonight that I unfortunately was not quite here for. And thank you just, Burnleal County, this is my home, and I'm looking at all of you, all of my colleagues and friends. And of course, Clerk Stover and Deputy Clerk Diaz, who are doing an amazing job. We would not have received the accolades we've received for our state in terms of running elections were it not for the incredible support that the commission and Burnleal County gave me over the years, and Julie and Kenem looking at you, and Shirley, for all the support you gave me when I was the clerk, and that you continue to give Clerk Stover and Deputy Clerk Diaz in their incredible work. It's just a real honor to be at the top of a good list instead of the bottom of a bad list, as we tend to see here in the state. And again, I think so much of the work that has been given accolades started here in Burnleal County and has been continued here in Burnleal County. So I know you have a lot of work to do tonight. I won't, you know, continue to go on and on. But thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners, all of you, for the support you give to elections in Burnleal County, which as we know, about a third of the voters in the state live here. So much of the voting experience in our state is dependent on the voting experience here. So much of the voting experience in our state is dependent on the voting experience here. And you continue to do incredible work and I'm honored to continue to be partners with you and just thank you all for the acknowledgement tonight.
Thank you Secretary for the quick round trip.
We now move on to item five, public comment.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, did I miss something? Oh, I apologize Commissioner Benson, it's at the bottom of my page. Commissioner Benson.
It's okay Madam Chair, thank you. This, we have some guests here from the New Mexico Autism Society, and this touches me personally. My son is on the spectrum and if you know, if you know, excuse me, one person on the spectrum, you know one person on the spectrum. Excuse me, thank you very much. Whereas Autism Acceptance Month is observed annually in April, intended to increase understanding and acceptance of the autism spectrum disorder and promote acceptance and celebration of those on the spectrum who are our family members, friends, classmates, coworkers, and community Along with valuable contributions and richness they bring to our world. And whereas autism is a developmental disability characterized by a range of socialization, communication, and behavioral challenges, which affects one in every 36 children in the United States, regardless of race, ethnicity, or other factors. And whereas research indicates that early diagnosis, intervention, and access to support services leads to positive outcomes for those living with a disorder. And whereas people with autism are productive members of the workforce when provided with appropriate support, training, and early intervention services. And whereas individuals with autism, like all other Americans, should have the opportunity to realize their ambitions and lead rewarding lives. Now therefore, the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners recognize and proclaim the month of April as Autism Acceptance Month. And we encourage all residents to be better informed, more empathetic, and supportive of those on the autism spectrum, done this 23rd day of April 2024 in Burnaleo County, state of New Mexico. I apologize, but thank you so much.
Thank you Commissioners and Commissioner Benson for inviting us here. My name is Christina Angel, I'm the Executive Director of Autism Society, New Mexico. I too am a parent of two boys with autism. Our organization helps connect families with the resources needed to live life fully. We offer social events for families to connect all across the state of New Mexico, in addition to providing INR services, and we also do policy work to help families with everything they need. Again, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much, please come up.
Now we move on to public comment. Before we hear communications, each person will have two minutes and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates these rules, they may be subject to removal. Thank you, Julianne, can you please read the names?
Yes Madam Chair, thank you. We have 19 signed up this evening. We'll start with in-person participation, starting off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Marcos Ortiz, followed by William Athas.
Wars have killed millions of soldiers for thousands of years. How many of them would not have become soldiers if they had known they would be killed? In World War II, how many US soldiers, killing and dying, knew Henry Ford was a good friend of Hitler's? Hitler kept Ford's picture in his office. The Ford Motor Company had US government permission to make Nazi tanks. The ITT Corporation based in the United States had designed and built Nazi phone and radio systems and supplied parts for German bombs. A US presidential order licensed US companies to trade with the Nazis. General Motors, DuPont, Standard Oil of New Jersey, Davis Oil Company, Chase National Bank did business with Hitler. The same US companies were also making huge profits supplying the US government. These US companies got filthy rich off the murder of millions on both sides. War is the worst of all crimes. Never become a soldier for any government. All governments lie when at war. One-third to one-half of federal income tax goes for war. I have paid no federal income tax for 45 years and I never will.
Thank you Mr. Schrader.
Marcos Ortiz, William Athas, Dr. Herados Cionello.
Good afternoon Marcos Ortiz. I'll start with a quote from Jefferson, "Freedom is what unites us," end of quote. Government bureaucracy wraps themselves in the cloth of environmentalism and safety concern while stabbing the people they represent in the back. Exchanging our liberty for safety is cringe-worthy. The administrative state regulating in this proposed ordinance version B are ill-considered malicious, sinister, and dishonest, only exacerbating the dominance of government over our rights and our citizenship. Depriving the use of property water rights to the most vulnerable New Mexico citizen is despicable, misguided, unattainable. This willful discharge of our property rights, alteration of existing oil permits with overregulated red tape layered with threats of fines and imprisonment for non-compliance will only cause economic strife, chaos, uncertainty, and insecurity, and impose a financial hardship on all of us. This is another example of a tyrannical authoritarian rule and abuse of power by a government that is brazenly arrogant about their ability to govern something that they cannot govern and in the process interfere with the water rights that are so psychoscentive to multigenerational New Mexicans. Concern and legislative policy should be directed at the true water wasters instead of the private landowners simply trying to grow their garden, feed their families, and survive this brutal environment. Attacking someone's property with this type of heavy-handed government overreach will have unintended political reverberation and legal consequences. Instead of fulfilling your sworn duty of protecting our rights, the county commission board has become a leaven that is forced feeding unwarranted regulation down our throats with no transparency or part being put.
Thank you Mr. Ortiz.
I prefer dangerous freedom over safe slavery.
Dr. Herados Cionello, followed by Jeremy Yang, followed by Ashley Wagner. Go ahead. If Mr. Athas can go first and then you can follow him.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, William Athas. I would like to thank the Commission for the opportunity to speak in support of the opposing resolution on water reuse. I'm a long-term resident of Burnaleo County and a retired UNAM professor of public health. I'm an epidemiologist by training with experience in cancer and environmental epidemiology and human health risk assessment. I've also taught environmental health for over 20 years at the graduate and undergraduate level and in my teaching I frequently use New Mexico case studies to illustrate concepts and themes. For example, passage of the 2019 Produced Water Act has provided opportunity to explore how New Mexico is seeking to reuse oil and gas wastewater outside of the oil and gas industry. This is a complex challenge. The wastewater contains a large array and variable mixture of toxic chemicals and radiologic hazards, many of which are not well-characterized, and New Mexico still does not require industry disclosure of proprietary chemicals used in hydraulic fracturing fluids. The state's vision is to harness emerging technology to reduce wastewater hazards to levels allowing further regulated environmental release, including via agricultural and irrigation pathways. On this matter, the New Mexico Environment Department Cabinet Secretary has been quoted to say, "Our goal is to create regulations that are protective of human health and the environment." At present, nobody knows just how to clean the oil and gas wastewater, or how clean it needs to be, or whether it will ever be feasible to do this. Given these uncertainties, it is surprising and concerning that the state environment department has recently petitioned the Water Quality Control Commission to adopt regulations that provide for the permitted discharge of treated oil and gas wastewater. The proposed regulation should not speak directly to human health protection, but rather refer to the vague promissory that health protective standards will be developed sometime in the future. The stakes are very high here, and the rules providing for discharge permitting are entirely premature and misguided.
Thank you for your comments.
All right. Good evening Madam Chair and County Commissioners, and thank you for serving. As you all know, that, some of you guys know, I waited nine years to be a naturalized US citizen illegally. Now Border Patrol said that illegal smugglers and the cartel have completely take over a mountain in Sunland Park, saying it's theirs, according to Fox News. More than 9.4 million illegal immigrants have crossed the border since Biden took office. This includes the 1.8 million gotaways who escaped past Border Patrol and into the country. 8,829 unaccompanied children were encountered. At least 75 people on the terror watch list have been encountered trying to enter the US between ports of entry this fiscal year. An Afghan on FBI terror watch lists spent almost a year roaming freely throughout the US after being released twice on American soil. Homeland Security investigation estimates that Mexican cartels are now making $13 billion a year smuggling illegal immigrants into the US, 26 times what they made in 2018. Now 1,389 pounds of deadly fentanyl and 17,938 pounds of methamphetamine were seized at the southern border in March alone, which much more are getting through. According to Biden's own DEA Administrator Anne Milgram, cartels are killing Americans with fentanyl at catastrophic and record rates like we've never seen before. A 15-year-old girl housed in a taxpayer-funded hotel serving migrants in Massachusetts was raped by an illegal immigrant. So it's no surprise to those living here that Forbes.com has rated New Mexico number one on a list of states with the worst crime rates. This ranking is based on per capita violent crimes, property crimes, and the chance of being victim of those crimes. Honestly, within our soul, which really had more crimes in human trafficking? Was it with our former president or current president? When will it end? As long as we have sanctuary county, this will never end. This is not a Democrat nor Republican issue, but an American issue.
Thank you Mr. Cionello, appreciate your comments.
Jeremy Yang, followed by Ashley Wagner, followed by Marie Gutierrez.
Thank you Commissioners, my name is Jared Ames. I am the Chair of the Environmental Justice Caucus for the Democratic Party, and I'm just here to speak about, in favor of voting yes on the resolution opposing the adoption of the fracking wastewater rule. Having that water in being redistributed back into the environment, I think is a huge problem. It's not tested and, you know, that water going into our ground with, you know, bioabsorption into the roots of plants and impacting our livestock, we just don't want to have that. So just want to reiterate to vote yes on the resolution opposing the adoption of the fracking wastewater rule. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Ames. And so do we go back to Mr. Yang?
Yes. Jeremy Yang. Moving on to Ashley Wagner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I am Ashley Wagner, the Vice President of Government Affairs for the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association, which is based in Santa Fe, New Mexico, but we have members all across the state. I will speak on the resolution in Agenda Item A on water reuse. Because New Mexico is facing a long-term water shortage, produced water can be an important part of filling that gap by expanding the use of an existing supply. The Environment Department created an organization called the New Mexico Produced Water Research Consortium to study whether the reuse of produced water was safe. The consortium, which is comprised of academia, state and federal agencies, national laboratories, and the private sector, has been studying the reuse of produced water for approximately five years. The program director for the consortium has unequivocally testified in the rulemaking proceedings that produced water can safely be reused and treated to meet the standards adopted by the Water Quality Control Commission, which ensure protection of human health and the environment. We urge you to please oppose the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Wagner.
Marie Gutierrez, followed by Jeanette Iscat, followed by Chris Baca.
My name is Marie Gutierrez and I'm here to ask for your vote in the Alameda Drain Project. So Madam Chair and members of the Commission, my husband and I both grew up in Alameda and have been lifelong residents with our children as well. I come before you with an urgent plea to support the Burnaleo County Alameda Drain Project, a critical initiative that directly addresses the pressing concerns faced by residents along St. Francis Road Northwest. St. Francis Road, once a quiet neighborhood, now transformed into a chaotic thoroughfare for businesses and impatient drivers along Fourth Street day and night. We have semis, hay haulers, shipping containers, and heavy equipment that navigate through this once peaceful street, leaving behind a trail of chaos and destruction. The stucco of many of our homes is now cracked from the weight of these vehicles. When the rain falls, the lack of proper drainage transforms our homes, walls, and vehicles into targets for mud splashes while trash accumulates. But the indignity casts a shadow of our community's dignity, but the indignities don't end there. Accidents at the Alameda intersection send overflow traffic avoiding the traffic lights, roaring down St. Francis, turning our once tranquil street into a battleground of honking horns and frustrated drivers. Tragically, accidents have consequences far beyond the immediate, as demonstrated by our neighbor's heartbreaking story. In 2022, she was involved in an accident at the intersection of Fourth Street and St. Francis, resulting in her relocation to a nursing home, where she ultimately succumbed to her injuries January 1st, 2024. This is just one instance in particular, although there have been many accidents. Homeland, our neighboring street to the south of St. Francis, has been shuttered for two long years due to a collapsed culvert, a fate St. Francis may soon share if action is not swiftly taken. We have signs telling people it's not a through street, but the message goes unheeded as their enforceability is hindered by their color.
Thank you Ms. Gutierrez, appreciate your comments.
Jeanette Iscat, Chris Baca.
Good afternoon, actually good evening. I'd like to thank the Burnaleo County Commissioners for the resolution opposing the adoption of 2608 about the fracking. I came down from San Miguel County today. I'm a farmer up there in Vinoueva, we have a farm called Bueno Para Todos, we're part of the San Miguel del Valle Land Grant, okay? And we sit with House And we sit with house scares and sacred the waters of New Mexico are for all of us, for all creatures, not simply for the human ones, okay? The junk science that is being, you know, put out that this water can be used in a healthy and ethical way is something I'm absolutely in opposition to. I hold Moore County thankful for them being the first county in the United States in 2013 to state that fracking is unacceptable and will destroy this water. We know how at risk we are, and that's why I'm here today, okay? I'm part of the people who are in opposition to the Terrero Mine, which is the exact same sort of scenario. Oh, we can come in and we can mine. It'll be okay later. It will not be. We cannot unpoison these waters. We are part, we farm off the Asequia. We are part of the Pecos watershed, and we have already been impacted by the fires. So it came down in solidarity for the people who will oppose the, you know, the adoption of this particular law. You know, we cannot reclaim our waters, and it's our job to speak on behalf of the creatures that can't, the pollinators, the birds, the creatures, the bears that run through my yard and coyote. Those creatures deserve clean water, and we speak for them. I thank you very much. I will report back to the people that I know in the pueblos, in the land grants, in our communities, because we will not allow this junk science to take apart the water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more time for Chris Baca. Moving on to Danger Varros.
Hello, Madam Chair and esteemed Commissioners. My name is Danger Varros. 2019 Albuquerque Alibi's Best Comic in the City. Still waiting for Mr. Gazada to put me up at his club, but I'm sure that email is coming. I strongly support the resolution before Burnley County to oppose NMED's dangerous and unscientific water reuse rule. Please vote yes to tell the Water Quality Control Commission that our water is more precious than the rule allows. The proposed rule authorizes the reuse of produced water or fracking waste on things like, and I quote, agriculture, irrigation, potable water supplies, aquifer recharge, industrial processes, environmental restoration. Folks, Dr. Pei Zhu from the consortium that the lady behind me just mentioned found that we can't safely reuse this stuff. They did some tests. They found it was 25 times, 15 to 25 times more radioactive than the EPA says is what constitutes radioactive. There's no scientific evidence that we can clean this stuff. It's full of poly and perfluoral alkal substances, forever chemicals, things that you cannot take out of things. So we're just going to clean it and feed it to our cattle and put it on our chili? Is that what the plan is? So I am really, really appreciative that this resolution was brought forward before this commission, because it's imperative that we vote yes for this resolution to oppose NMED's rule change at the Water Quality Control Commission. The rule includes no scientific standards for testing requirements for the treated fracking waste proposed for reuse. The New Mexico Environmental Department has already failed to enforce the prohibition against produced water spills, more than 40,000 accidental spills just since the governor took office. As a Burnley County resident and as a New Mexican, I don't like it. Before we allow our toxic waste to be treated and reused for agriculture or aquifer recharge or environmental restoration, we need to determine that it is safe. Thank you for bringing this resolution and standing up for the environment and public health, and I hope you guys figure out everything that's going on between you guys. Best of luck.
Ray Ellen Smith, followed by Stephen Conrad.
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me today. My name is Ray Ellen Smith. I'm the President of Indivisible Albuquerque. I'm here to implore you to pass the resolution opposing adoption of the proposed new rule 20.6.8 NMAC Ground and Surface Water Protection Supplemental Requirements for Water Reuse, and that probably used half of my two minutes. There are some problems with the language in this rule. These problems must be resolved before this rule is ready for prime time. First of all, it's unclear to what this rule applies. The rule's purpose is to protect ground and surface water from releases of untreated or treated produced water. Produced water is defined in the Oil and Gas Act as a fluid that is incidental byproduct from drilling or for the production of oil and gas. That statute governs how the produced water can be used, and it's specifically exempted in this rule. So what is this rule trying to do? This is the circular logic of the language in the rule. Are there other kinds of produced water? If so, where's that defined? I can't figure it out. I doubt you could either. Section 12 of the rule allows for treated produced water to be discharged into the ground or surface water with a permit from the Environmental Department, which, as was mentioned, is understaffed and underpaid. How are they going to possibly be able to monitor this? I think you can tell from my frustration that this rule is not clear. It does not define key terms used in it, and it just goes in a circular fashion. What does treated mean? To what scientific standard? I believe this rule is a ruse to support a non-marketable product for use in imaginary industries and marketed to the public as a new strategic water supply. Please approve the administrative resolution to oppose the adoption of the new proposed rule 20.6.8 NMAC Ground and Surface Water Protection Supplemental Requirements for Water Reuse.
You did it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I want to speak in support of the groundwater and surface water protection resolution. My name is Stephen Conrad, and I'm here representing Reboot Our Democracy. I have a PhD in groundwater hydrology from New Mexico Tech, and I worked at Sandy Labs for 26 years. I worked on safe radioactive waste disposal, a range of groundwater cleanup projects, and EPA-funded research. Given only two minutes, I want to make one important point. We need unambiguous quantitative cleanup standards, and we need them up front before we get down, too far down the road to turn back. So let's recap the situation in the oil patch. Oil companies use freshwater to extract petroleum from the ground, and they're intending to give us back treated water of significantly diminished quality. In fracking, you put in freshwater sand and proprietary additives, and what comes out? Petroleum, of course, the injected water, plus the proprietary additives, and lots of what's called conate water. This is extremely saline water that existed in the petroleum formation. This water had thousands of years to have petroleum components dissolve into them. And this water also has dissolved radionuclides and other solutes that come from the rock. So clean water comes in, and severely contaminated water comes out. Counterintuitively, it's the salt, the most mundane component that's the most costly to remove. And unless the salt is entirely removed, this water isn't suitable for many applications at all. Let's say the water could be cleaned up. With current technology, there's absolutely no way the water can be sold anywhere for the cost of treatment. The cost of treatment is just far too high. It's a losing proposition. So if the state's paying for this, it's a huge subsidy to oil and gas. And if the oil companies are footing the bill, they almost certainly find reuse other ways.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad.
Very helpful. Okay, that concludes in-person public comment. We'll move now to Zoom participants, starting with Nicole Majestas Olanovic, followed by Patrick Martin, followed by James Santiago Majestas.
Thank you, Chairwoman and members of the Commission. My name's Nicole Majestas Olanovic. I'm a disabled veteran, a mother, a homeowner, a lifelong resident of the South Valley, and I'm here on behalf of the Adelante Progressive Caucus and myself. New Mexico seems to be viewed as a haven for dumping toxic waste, extraction of hazardous waste, and now some folks in our government want to allow man-made, toxic, radioactive, reused fracking water to be pumped and dumped in order to feed our fossil fuel addiction, and without the consent of the residents who depend on water for survival. We have fought back against the misuse of our lands and water in the legislature, and now we must protect ourselves at the county level. I ask you to support the resolution to oppose rule changes that would authorize fracking water outside of the oil field. I thank the sponsors for bringing the resolution forward, because it feels like we must take every action necessary to protect our environment. It's a shame that when our legislature sets a standard that some in power feel like they can just change the rules or go around the wishes of the people in New Mexico, and those standards set in the roundhouse. Let's make it clear that this is not welcome in Burnley County. Let us come together and protect our Asecias, our watersheds, and our people from the hazardous, unstudied, destructive rule changes that will put our clean water at risk. On another note, I also ask my Commissioner, Commissioner Casada, who invoked his constituents and his desire to uplift our voices, to support Yolanda Martinez Cardova as our county manager. Thank you for your time.
Patrick Martin, followed by James Santiago Majestas, followed by Rhiannon Samuel.
Thank you, County Commission. My name is Patrick Martin, and I am the advocacy chair of Bike ABQ, the Albuquerque Region's premier bicycle advocacy organization. I urge the county to continue to fund and support the completion of the Alameda Drain Trail Project by approving Agenda Item 10F2. Certainly, this is needed. There are currently no north-south bicycle routes between Rio Grande and the North Diversion Channel between Paseo and Alameda. That is a span of four miles without any bike lanes or any bicycle infrastructure. I also wish to emphasize how comfortable it is to bike and walk on trails that are separated from particular traffic. The Alameda Drain Trail, where it currently exists, is a much nicer experience to travel on than vanilla bike lanes that might be considered as alternatives. Burnley County and the North Valley deserves quality bicycle infrastructure and to be connected to the rest of the county's bicycle network. Please support and fully fund the Alameda Drain Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
James Majestas, followed by Rhiannon Samuel, followed by Nadia Brent.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and the majority of members of the Commission. I wish to speak in support of the county manager's resolution that has already been passed and support the South Valley resident, who's been appointed to be part of the screening committee, Yolanda Martino Montoya Cardova. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and the majority of the members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Majestas.
Rhiannon Samuel.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Rhiannon Samuel, and I am the Executive Director for NAOP New Mexico. I know that the item I was going to speak on this evening was deferred. It's the Burnley County Water Wells Ordinance, but I'd still like to take a little bit of time to tell you why we feel that Option A is preferable to Option B. So NAOP New Mexico is the Commercial Real Estate Development Association, but really, what it means is that we're responsible for the built environment. Whether it's infrastructure, housing, or commercial development, our members are the ones who are implementing it. And what we also are is a nonpartisan group, and what we like to see is collaboration. And we see that within Option A. We believe that this is a stronger option, and we're hopeful that over the next couple of weeks, while this is deferred, the collaboration is only furthered. We believe that Option B is going to be ripe with legal concerns and doesn't show the same kind of collaboration that Option A did. I'll speak to you again in a few weeks, but just wanted to plant that seed as you continue your work on this important ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Nadia Brent, followed by Xavier Barasa.
Hi, this is Nadia, and I'm inspired by the passion of this community. And my question is always the same. Why in the world would we ever gamble our most precious resource, clean water, to support the continued production of our most dangerous one, or one of our most dangerous ones? That would be fossil fuels. We are looking for leaders to expedite just transitions towards safe renewables. That should be our priority. Governor, I hope you're listening. New Mexicans cannot be fooled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brent.
Xavier Barasa, followed by Peter Robertson.
Hello, am I audible?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Xavier Barasa. I'm making these comments on behalf of Los Ardeles Institute. We're a grassroots legacy organization in the South Valley of Albuquerque, New Mexico, and been organizing here in the valley for a long time now. We're here to support the leadership being taken just to hear this reuse opposition role. First, of course, we support you all supporting it for all the reasons that have already been said. We want to see our communities healthy and whole, and this is the kind of steps we need by this commission. I would even, we would even, Los Ardeles Institute would even like to encourage you all to continue to go further, continue to fund the research that's needed to really assess what kind of situation we're in. Because what we're seeing is Burnley County is a major water user. Our wastewater treatment outfall down in Mountain View Community is the third-largest tributary, if I'm not mistaken, to the Rio Grande. Millions and millions of gallons of water we use to keep life into the entire county. And so hopefully, this commission, yes, supports this and continues to drive it farther. As a prime market suspect or consumer for this contaminated water, we obviously cannot use, based on everything that's been said, we need to be ready for the future. We need to be thinking preventative measures. We need to be ahead of the curve, and this is just the start. So encourage you all to take those steps, and thank you for the kinship and vulnerability earlier from the Commissioners, especially around that declaration, because we know environmental factors have absolutely everything to do with how we develop. And so this is about all of us, and thank you for that vulnerability and leadership and kinship. And yeah, let's drive this farther, continue to invest in these kind of maneuvers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barasa.
Peter Robertson, followed by Rosando Nahar, followed by Brian Condit.
Hello, this is Peter Robertson. I just want to second everything that my neighbor, Ms. Marie Gutierrez, said in reference to the Alameda Drain Trail Project, which, particularly for the safety issues. I am actually sitting in my front office on St. Francis, looking out my front window, and the volume of traffic is both heavy, as it always is at every time of day, and it's just fast and it's reckless, and it's only gotten worse over the past five, well, since I've been here in 2007. So I really strongly support everything that Ms. Gutierrez and anybody else has said about the Alameda Drain Trail Project. I ask that you support it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Rosando Nahar.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair. I'm Rosando Nahar with the Carpenters Union. I know you guys will soon be voting on an upcoming project, which would fall under our CWA agreement that we have. I think it's a firehouse upcoming in the North Valley. I would just like to encourage, you know, the county Commissioners to vote in favor of having a CWA in place on this project. You know, that CWA that we have placed is to benefit the community in many aspects. I know there's an uneducated comment about the CWA costing the projects more money, and that is very untrue. Apart from having workforce development and having apprentices on the job site, it actually does cost the county less money by allowing these contractors to have apprentices on the job site and not having to pay the full scale, which open shop contractors would have to. I know the example that was used several years back was on the Route 66 Visitor Center, and we all know that that, you know, would not go too well. That I think, I believe, that's even a part of the county is trying to get rid of now that a project did not go all too well. So I would highly encourage the county Commissioners to just, you know, please vote in favor of having the CWA on these future projects. It is very important to us for what we are doing with the APS and the schools and the youth that we're trying to get into the trades. So having these project labor agreements in place and having jobs for them to go to while they earn, while they learn is very important. So please take into consideration voting in favor of that CWA for that project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Condit.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Brian Condit, New Mexico Building Trades Council. I speak tonight on behalf of, in support of Item 10D, the utilization of the Community Workforce Agreement for Fire Station Number 36. I would ask the Commission to consider building codes an integral part of protecting our environment when they take this item up tonight, as Rosando with the Carpenters shared. our environment when they take this item up tonight as Rosando with the carpenters shared the utilization of apprentices, certified construction professionals, and adhering to New Mexico and the city of Burnaleo County Building Codes. We we urge your support and utilize in the Community Workforce Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condit. And that concludes public comment. That concludes our public comment. Thank you all very much. We move on to Item Six on our agenda, approval of minutes. I move the approval of the- Madam Chair, I hope we can go back to the communications item, please. Oh, I apologize. Boy, I keep jumping ahead. Sorry about that. Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you fellow commissioners. My name is John Garish. I am the program director for the County Extension Office. And so thank you very much for having me tonight, and just wanted to give our first quarter update of all of our fun activities that we're doing with education. And for those of you who don't know what extension is, we are a partnership between Burnaleo County, New Mexico State University, and the United States Department of Agriculture. So we work with education on agriculture, food, health, wellness, and as well as our 4H kids. So I believe all of you received our year-in program back in March for all of our updates. And so for this year, we've been quite busy already. Working with our open spaces, we had our winter ag business classes. We had six classes to help out our ag entrepreneurs for business planning, marketing, record-keeping, and taxes. And we had anywhere from 10 to 20 people attending each class over the beginning of the year. So started off the dols of the winter with exciting business classes, so hopefully spur on some good ag entrepreneurs. Also helping out the Grow the Growers program, which is happening at the Gutierrez Hubble House. So we helped to interview the candidates, support the curriculum development by personally have delivered classes on soil, plant diseases disorders, as well as the business planning and food safety. And we also did a fruit tree pruning workshop with 60 people up at Los Ranchos. Our master gardeners are very active. We have 60 new trainees who just completed their 14-week training series. We have over 300 returning volunteers who will be helping out with 44 volunteer opportunities throughout Burnaleo County, including three community gardens that are growing food for area food banks. And this year, our Urban Farm Oasis was recognized by Mayor Keller as one of the community service awards for the city. And that garden grew close to 1,500 pounds of fresh produce delivered through the Roadrunner Food Bank. We're also doing hotline, so answering calls for the public site visits and public workshops to inspire people how to grow their own food and their gardens. Our Master Food Preserver is a new program or rekindled program. This year, we have 15 new trainees who just finished up the 12-week course. There are training volunteers to support and teach food preservation, and we're going to have 40 community courses about canning, freezing, jams, jellies, meats, chili products, spices, fermentation, and cheesemaking. And so our hope is to support more food entrepreneurs and get more local food-based businesses up and going by teaching them food safety, process control, and labeling, and also sourcing from our local producers, our farmers. Our 4H in the schools, we have expanded our hydroponic and egg in the chick. Thank you, Commissioner Olivas, for a little bit of the funding with those. We are currently in 15 classrooms this spring, participating at 10 10 schools for our hydroponics, and our egg to chick were in 68 classrooms this spring, over 27 schools. So we're really reaching out, bringing people to know how to grow their food, but also teaching them empathy and caring with how to raise animals. Our 4H military partnership, we have 100 youth participating in after-school on 20 projects. We have a picture here of of one of our earlier spring break where we were teaching the kids how to make sourdough starters and sourdough bread. So we're going to be on base after-school and during the various spring break, summer break, and winter break. But this year, we're also hosting 50 youth from around New Mexico for our summer adventure and leadership, working with many of our military bases. Our club programming, we had our senior leadership retreat in January. We held the skill school here on our property, hosting 200 youth from around the state of New Mexico. And our youth giveaway, our kids just got back from Glorieta Camp, some some of them, their first experience away from home for the weekend. We have our food challenge kids who are prepping for the national competition, and we're getting ready locally. We just finished up our speech and fashion competitions. We're getting ready for our livestock and natural resources, as well as our archery and shooting sports competition. This year, we have 230 enrolled youth with 65 volunteers for the community, and our 4H County Fair will be held July 20th through 27th. And so that's the brief overview of all the work that we're doing. We're keeping quite busy, and we thank you for all of your support and continued support throughout the years. Any questions for me, commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Garish. I appreciate all that your programs do. It's very impactful. Commissioner Barboya.
I just want to say thank you so much. My father and many of my family members were 4H. I still have his little certificate when he's pride pig one in the fair, many, many. My father's passed since then, but I just, you all are building the future that we need, people using, learning how to preserve our food. You're preserving our culture by doing that, so just thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, John, for all the great work you guys do at the Extension Office. I'm so grateful just to be able to support the the program that I was able to help with to get some more education into our schools about plants and biology and living creatures and living things. It's just so important that our youth are able to experience things that they may not otherwise be able to experience if they're living in apartments or, you know, other places where you never may see a chicken or a garden. And so I'm just thrilled with the work that you guys are doing to bring that to our most vulnerable communities and happy to continue to support anything you need to to make that program sustainable and grow so that more students and youth can experience that kind of just wonder of the natural world. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other? Thank you, Mr. Garish.
Thank you much.
Appreciate the presentation.
Have a good evening.
Okay, now we will move on to approval of the minutes. I move approval of the March 19th, 2024 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes. Item 6B, I move approval of the April 9th, 2024 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Move on to Agenda Item Seven, Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for Items Seven, B, E, F, G, and H?
Yes, ma'am. B1 is FR 2024-48. B2 is FR 2024-49. B3 is FR 2024-50. E is AR 2024-51. F is FR 2024-52. G is AR 2024-53. H is AR 2024-54.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Consent Agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. We move on to Item Eight, Adoption of Ordinance, Amendment to the County Code. Commissioners Behavioral Health Authority Ordinance, Commissioners Barboya and Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you. I am so excited about this opportunity. Commissioner Olivas and I have drafted a resolution, and this is introduction to it. I wanted to read. This is introduction to it, so we know that this is an important move, and we want to get feedback from everyone. So as county has, right, we introduce something, and then about 30 days later, it'll come up for a vote. So I'm excited and want to announce publicly that we are open to input communications. We're working with our county staff. This, as folks have heard me say so many times from this diocese, that the behavioral health work of the county is the reason why I ran for county commission. It has been my focus, and I just, we have exciting things tonight on with our new deputy county manager of behavioral health, and this ordinance that I think is really going to help us create the infrastructure, build the opportunity for us to really build a system of care that meets the needs of our our most vulnerable communities. So I'll, I won't go into further conversation, but look forward to many opportunities to meeting with groups, people, individuals, providers, community, and our own staff here and in the stakeholder departments and the sectors that we work within. So I look forward to it, and let's build the systems our our communities need. Chair, co-author.
Thank you, co-sponsor. I'm really excited to be working with you on this and working with our entire county team. This is something that that really frankly has been years in the making, because to draft this ordinance, we drew on the work product of of many outstanding individuals, both staff members and volunteers for the county and contractors that we hired that have produced so much information over the years. So everything from the the first resolution that that I was able to sponsor last year, setting up the work group, the behavioral health work group, which really was the the underpinning for this draft. But before that, we had our our draft strategic plan, the business plan, we have the gap analysis. So much work has been done. And of course, our wonderful staff at the at the Behavioral Health Initiative and the Department of Behavioral Health Services, our county manager, finance team, has been stewarding this along in in different forms since its inception. And we know that that our level of comfort with this has changed, right? Initially in 2014, we were one of the first communities in the nation to step up and say, this is a priority. Behavioral health is a priority, and we've got to fund it, and we've got to treat this differently. We've got to treat behavioral health like the healthcare that it is, right? And so we led the nation, but that also meant that we didn't have a playbook, we didn't have, you know, all the answers. And so really, I think our our team has done a terrific job of of sort of adjusting and modulating, calibrating to all the changes in the landscape. And of course, during that time, we had COVID, we've had economic disruptions, all these things that have that have happened that have continued to shift the landscape. But I think we're at a place now where we have enough data. We've been doing this for almost 10 years, and we've done the research, we've done the planning, that we're at a point where as a county, it's it's time to to step up and set those long-term goals. Not to say that we haven't had those, but to really cement those in the the ordinance and the laws of the county, to say this is is how we're going to proceed and how we're going to prioritize and set forth the purpose and goals of this incredibly important function that is behavioral health here at Burnaleo County. We had an extremely productive meeting today with our county manager and our behavioral health staff, which, as this ordinance envisions, behavioral health is a lot more than just the Behavioral Health Initiative, right? We had our Community Services, DCM, we had our our Public Works, right? Everybody's involved in this, because behavioral health is not just the contracts and services, it's all the supports and things that go into that. And that's how we really envisioned this ordinance and why it's so important. So that meeting was very productive. That's a first step. I think we we envision definitely more meetings and more collaboration with the staff. We've sent this out to the steering committee. We've sent this out to the ATAB and so many other working groups of dedicated citizens and individuals in our community that care about behavioral health. So I know that my co-sponsor and I, we are dedicated to to saying here and now, this is, this is our draft ordinance. I want to be very clear, this is a draft, and this is now, the reason we pushed so hard for introduction tonight is because we want to introduce this to the community and say, please, give us your best. Give us your input on this, because without this being out there, without putting forward an idea, it's it's hard to ask people to comment on something which is not there. And so I think it's just critical that we introduce this tonight and move forward in accepting comment and accepting whatever feedback we can get from our staff, from our community, fellow commissioners. This is, I truly believe this is a working document. And the last thing I want to say is I just want to thank our incredible legal team, our county attorney, and and all of the staff there at the county attorney's office that has worked on this. We received really incredible support from them in drafting this and making sure that this, we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed, and I'm just so grateful for our county attorney and their their assistance with this. So with that, I just say, you know, we are, we are open to comment, we are open to the conversation, and I think that this can be a real catalyst for positive change to to, again, as we said with the work group, take good to great and and move on to the next iteration of behavioral health, making sure that we're serving our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Olivas.
Vice Chair.
Commissioner Betson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I think this is a really good start. I'm a little concerned that we will vote on whether to pass it in a month, because I think there will be a lot of input. I've I've got input on this. In first, county attorney, my my first concern is just its title. Is this an ordinance? Is this legal law that we're creating?
Yes, sir. It's currently drafted as an ordinance.
Okay, that, so that's one of my concerns, is that if if our DCM for behavioral health doesn't follow this to the T, then they're breaking the law. So I think we have a lot of work to do, but I'm willing to put my comments in, and they can be discarded if you'd like, but I'm happy to communicate with all of you.
Commissioner Olivas, and then Commissioner Casada.
I just wanted to respond briefly to your comment there, Commissioner. And we've had those similar discussions in our meeting today with county staff, and I think one thing that's important to point out, we have an animal welfare ordinance that, you know, even if it's not complied with fully by by staff, you know, mistakes happen, things happen at times. It doesn't mean that we fire the director, that the director has some kind of penalty. We have a Parks and Recreation Ordinance. Again, you know, it lays out different sort of expectations and goals and how the department functions, but again, we don't necessarily use it as a as a punishment tool. So so I think we have examples that our legal team directed us to of ordinances, because you're absolutely right, we have other ordinances that lay out monetary penalties, jail time, those kinds of things. And this this sort of falls into that category of those those first two that I described, but we are definitely open to to making sure that that the understanding is set forward to all of our staff, not just the DCM, that this is not meant to be punitive, this is not meant to to function in that way.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, you know, I just, I have, I have a problem with the word authority. I like the initiative. I think initiative kind of moves that 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 mindset in that direction. I totally want to support this for sure. You know, I'm, I want to be hopeful that this really moves us in the right direction. You know, I've had homelessness in my neighborhood for 60 years. I've had drug addicts in my neighborhood for 60 years. I've had behavioral health issues in my neighborhood for 60 years. So I'm with trying to do something more, and I'm with trying to do something maybe different. I just hope that, you know, a lot of the the nonprofits that are in my district will listen to us tonight and get involved and put your input into this, because they're the ones, they're the boots on the ground. There's a lot of providers in the South Valley that, you know, they're, they're the experts. They're truly the experts, because they're the ones who are actually doing the work every single day. So I implore, and we'll reach out through my office to a lot of those nonprofits and send them this this ordinance and let them get their feedback in it. But definitely, you know, we have to support trying to do something else and trying to do something new, because again, I haven't seen anything really that has made a difference. So I'm hopeful, and I support moving forward.
Thank you. I guess I would like to also add that I appreciate the leadership of Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Barboya on moving this forward, and I'm hearing that all stakeholders are invited to the table and all commissioners are invited to discuss this, such an important issue that has been the key issue ever since I initially ran for for office, and constituents continue to call this out as the really big issue that Burnaleo County can be the, continue to be the leader in. And so I think this could take us in that direction, so. So do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Or move to introduce.
To publish. It's been moved and seconded to approve for publication. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. When that passes. Item B, Economic Development, uh, Ordinance for Array Technologies, Inc., Local Economic Development, Marcos Gonzalez. Um, excuse me, Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, ma'am, ordinance 2024-10.
And, um, we will now convene a public hearing and, um, I understand there is no one here to speak to that, but Marcos, so please give your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Marcos Gonzalez, economic development officer for, uh, Burnley County. Um, the economic dev- development staff recommends the approval of the ordinance authorizing the Burnley County Commission to approve the lead application together with the state of New Mexico and the city of Albuquerque pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and the Burnley County Local Economic Development Act Plan on behalf of Array Technologies. A request to Burnley County is for 250,000. And for clarification, the city of Albuquerque will also contribute 250,000 and the state of New Mexico will contribute 2.5 million dollars to the project for a total $3 million lead a package for Array Technologies. Like to also note that, um, my colleagues, uh, Beth Waldrep from the state of New Mexico and Chris Chavis from the city of Albuquerque are here in support as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I move approval to start with. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So on the, the jobs created and, and the salaries, it's saying, uh, average annual salary of new jobs growing from 35 to 48. Does that mean that the salary will be increasing from what it is currently at 35 to 48 or is that giving a range of 35 to 48?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I believe that's a range, but we have, uh, individual from Array Technologies that can speak to their salaries as well.
Okay. And it's, it gives the same thing and 51,000 to 78,000. So I'm just trying to understand what that means.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Ramon Romero. I am from Array Technologies. I'm actually the production manager, so I oversee actually a lot of the employees that are going to be employed at this new facility. Um, what this means is we are going to be increasing wages and, you know, these new positions as well, these will actually be production employees, people on the floor that everybody, you know, normal people, we want to be trained, we're going to be training them, moving them along. Um, and we want to grow them from, you know, being able to start at a lower wage and work them up to better themselves, not just for our company, but for themselves and for the community. Um, but that wage is, our wages are going up as we move forward in the next coming years.
Madam Chair. Thank you for, for clarifying that. So I think it, it is that it's, it's growing. Um, and I guess the other follow-up question I would just have is, um, are you able to, to recruit most of your workforce, if not all of your workforce here locally, or are you having to look out of state?
No, we are actually looking, our, our workforce actually within state is 90% we're looking for within state. Majority of the production employees that we'll be looking for will be within state if, at least within county too, because we, you know, we were looking for people and hiring people from with, within our county and that's what we want.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, um, can you just highlight in addition to the jobs that this will add, what jobs will this be keeping here in Burnley?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, uh, the facility will retain 252 jobs, so those 252 jobs are currently working now. Um, and then it will create 51 new jobs with the salaries that, uh, Aromen had shared.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to point that out that this, uh, is such a great opportunity and I love that Array is homegrown. Uh, this is a baby that, uh, has chosen to stay here and you didn't have to. You could have gone to Phoenix, um, you could have gone to a lot of other job markets that wanted you. We wanted you too and we want you for our kids and our, our citizens and you've, you've chosen to stay and invest in our community. The, um, so it's not just the jobs either, it's also the economic development that that generates because these products are being shipped around the world, which brings money from outside of New Mexico into New Mexico, into Burnley County specifically. That's, that's true economic development, more than, uh, more than a lot of small businesses. So, uh, well done and, uh, this is exciting.
Thank you. I would also just like to add, um, how important it is to, to create these new jobs and keep, keep this local, uh, company here. Also of note is the state, city and county all partnering in this project. This collaboration is, is what we want to see more of. So thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for your work and thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, did we, we've been seconded, yes, Mr. Commissioner Benson. So all those in favor?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Item C, Economic Development again. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number for the industrial revenue bond for Array?
Yes, ma'am, ordinance 2024-11.
Again, we will convene a public hearing and Julianne, there are no, no, uh, public on to comment, so turn it over to you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the economic development staff recommends approval to adopt the ordinance authorizing the Burnley County Commission to issue industrial revenue bonds not to exceed 49.5 million on behalf of Array Technologies and Burnco Investors LLC for the purpose of construction and equipping of their advanced manufacturing solar facility.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments to, for the good of the group?
I'm sure.
Commissioner Olivas.
Uh, I just wanted to point out as, as usual with these, that the $49 million number is not, to be clear to the public watching, that is not a, a direct amount that the county is providing to the developer. Um, that is the amount of, of revenue bonds that are offer, authorized. Uh, so I just, you know, I know that these are always kind of confusing, they're still confusing to me and, uh, but I think it's really important that the public understands this is not us cutting a check, this is us providing, uh, really incentives to the developer and, and that the tax benefits that we provide to the developer through the IRB, um, are really supplemented by the, the tax gains from the development, right? The developers investing money, they're creating jobs, they're paying more taxes, property taxes, grocery receipts, taxes, all those types of things. And so we are offsetting a portion of that new revenue to incentivize this project. So this is not a direct subsidy, it is, uh, foregoing some of the new tax revenue in order to encourage this local development.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further, Marcos?
Um, Madam Chair, that's correct and just that the, uh, 49.5 million is actually the private investment that will be done to construct the facility and purchase equipment, which will be done with funds provided by the, um, applicant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resounding, thank you very much, appreciate it. We will now move on to, uh, agenda item nine, adoption of resolutions. Let's see.
Is it that there aren't any?
Oh, that's right.
Madam Chair, for clarity, we had the add-on item?
The one, add-on item, yes. So the late add-on, um, Commissioner, uh, Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number for the ground and surface water protection?
Yes, ma'am, AR 2024-51.
Thank you. Commissioner Vice Chair Olivas.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was confused because you said there's no resolutions, but we added that.
We add, it's an add-on, yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you, Madam.
Madam Chair, my apologies, Commissioner Vice Chair. Um, because we moved that item from the top to the bottom, the number should be 55.
Okay. AR 2024-55. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
So, uh, this is an item, as, as I said at the beginning, this is really time sensitive because, uh, the Water Protection Commission, Ground and Surface Water Protection Commission will be meeting in the very near future to discuss this, uh, new proposed rule. As we heard from many eloquent and much better, uh, versed speakers as far as the science and the, the actual use of this water, uh, I will not spend a lot of time discussing, you know, the intricacies of this, but the bottom line is here, this is time sensitive because we have this hearing coming up. And I think it's really important as the largest county in the state, as a shareholder, if you will, in the water utility authority, through our, our board positions that, that several of us hold, um, water is, is absolutely critical. It is, is a resource, it is a gift of life that we must protect, we have to stand with and stand up for. And as, as one of our farmers so, so eloquently said, there's so many entities, organisms, animals, plants, fish that depend on clean, safe water besides us. You know, all those uses I just kind of mentioned before really emphasize the, the anthropogenic use of water. And it's important to remember that there are all those things that also rely on water to survive and, and clean water to survive. So, you know, we've heard about the issues with PFOS and microplastics and so many of these emerging contaminants that we still have no understanding, really frankly, of their abundance, their persistence in the environment and how to remove them. The science is just not there. And I think that we are, the state through this proposed rule is advancing the sort of technology and the, the permitting process far ahead of where the science is. And that's a really dangerous place for us to go as a state. And that's why I brought this resolution forward because I, this, we're just not ready for this. Uh, I'm all for using technology and looking at how we can make sure that we're using water in the smartest ways possible. Uh, is there a future in our state and our community for things like desal- desalinization, things like that? There probably is. Those are, there's probably conversations we have to have about future water resources and, and best and highest use. But the idea of using treated, produced oil water, frac water, uh, for these kinds of nebulous and broad purposes with the blanks left TBD, right? We'll fill those in later, we'll figure it out later, uh, is a very dangerous place for us to go as a, as a state. And so I think it's really important again, as the largest county in the state, that we stand up, take a position on this and tell, uh, this commission, our governor, our, our New Mexico Environment Department, that we're just not ready for this. It's, it's not ready for prime time. We need more information, we need more science in this before we can, can even consider it, much less support it. Um, and, and so I think it's just really important that we stand up as we have with other issues. You know, this commission took a really strong stand on the LNG gas plant and we were heard, you know, that, that made, I, I think it made a big impact on that debate, hearing from us, hearing from, from the local leaders that, that will have to deal with the downstream effects of this. And I think we're in the same position on this. This rule can be promulgated and then all of a sudden, these substances start, start showing up in our community, start being marketed to our farmers, to our industry. And lo and behold, then we have the substances in frac water showing up in our treatment plant, in our river, in our groundwater. Uh, we just can't have that, we're, we're not ready for that. We have to stand up for our farmers, for our environment, uh, for, for all that we hold dear. So with that, I just want to urge my colleagues to, to please support this. This is a strong statement of where this commission stands and where our county stands with our water and, and with our environment. I make a motion for approval.
I'll second that. Um, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Um, the reason I, I'm not going to oppose the adoption of this new rule is because we've already got the water there and, and what I, um, I don't often agree with our, uh, governor and some of our initiatives, but this is bold and it's a, it's a, a choice to do something with that water instead of just letting it stagnate. Um, it's a problem, it's a problem for the state and this could actually be a resource, uh, that is potentially exported. Now, I do agree that, uh, we don't have all the information, but we got to start somewhere. And that's, that's what, why this was started. So, um, I think we should support it because it, we got to start somewhere and this, this doesn't just start feeding, um, this water to humans and cattle right away. It, it is developing the science. Um, we could be the leaders of that science. And so that's why I think it, it is a good, uh, idea to support. And so I will not oppose this adoption. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a, a comment. Um, when I, when I served on the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, there was much discussion about this, produced water, it sounds like a good thing. We need more water, this produced water. What I've learned from this and hearing from our public today is we need to tread very carefully. And so I, I will support this, opposing the adoption of, of this new rule. And I think that it is a message that we, we need to be careful, we know that this exists, but, um, as we heard from some of our, uh, speakers today, that, that there are some very unintended consequences that, that we need to be, um, uh, very, uh, certain of what we're doing, uh, with this produced water. So that's my statement. Um, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, uh, my first question is, um, you know, where, where does the water go now? I mean, are they using waters as fracking, as drilling, they're putting it in the ground right now as we speak. Um, how do they collect that water? Where does it go? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know enough about it. So, I mean, that's a big question for me. Uh, but if we're just looking at what we're doing today, I mean, as, as you know, sometimes we, we make a stand, we don't really have a voice in this, but you know, I think, uh, I think the, I think the copper for me was the guy who went to New Mexico Tech and then worked at Sandia National Laboratories and this was his focus and this is what he did. And I think if that, if you're passionate about that and that's the kind of scientist you become and you're saying that it's not ready, uh, then, you know, that kind of scares me, uh, because, um, the one thing that I have to do for my district is protect water. That's my number one, that's the number one job I have for the South Valley is to protect the water. And so, um, I'm going to support it, but I also think that we need to, and if I would have snapped to have an amendment pushing forward to the technology, right? To really get us there, if I had an amendment, that's what I would do to say, hey, look, we want you to, 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 to really look at this and we want you to really, uh, uh, put your minds together on how we can preserve every drop of water because that we have to do as well. So we have two jobs up here now. We got to protect water, conserve water, save water, but we have to do it in a way that we know is sustainable and that we have the science behind it to know that it is viable. So that's a tough decision to make. That's not an easy one to make for me, uh, but tonight I'm going to support us standing up and saying, hey, uh, we agree that we need to do it, I just don't agree you're ready to do it, if that makes sense. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Uh, I just wanted to respond briefly in my very limited knowledge on this, Commissioner. Uh, I believe the water is, uh, currently either reused in the, in the fracking process, reused, uh, so recycled if you will, uh, and much of it is, is stored. Uh, and that's, the first one is, is in a, probably an ideal use of, of this type of resource. Um, the storage is a problem and I totally agree with you. Um, it's, this is not a no ever, this is a no not now, right? This is not ready for prime time. When this mentions things like potable use and agricultural use and then it doesn't define what standard that is, well, how clean does this need to be to be used for agriculture or potable use? Um, the fact that this doesn't define those standards to, to a rigorous scientific definition is why this is not ready. So, uh, I, I, I agree with you. This is, we're going to have to look at this because allowing this water to just sit there in ponds is also not a sustainable practice. That's what leads to the 48,000 spills or, or whatever the, the number was that, that one of our commenters used. Uh, having to sit there is also not sustainable. We, we have to come up with a solution, but the solution is not to experiment on agricultural and potable use. So, thank you.
Any further questions, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I, I do, just want to say, um, this would get us there. And that's, that's the goal of it, is to do something, that the water is just sitting there and it is a problem and it's an unused resource. And, and I agree with, uh, Commissioner Olivas that we got to get there and that's what this does. It doesn't get there instantly and, and that's also where the vagaries come in, where, uh, it allows flexibility to move. uh, it allows flexibility to move forward, to make sure that it's a good product moving forward, um, not just instantly feeding it to people or livestock or, or, um, farming. So it, we can tell the governor to stand down, but if not now, when? And so I don't, I don't fully understand the opposition to it, I guess.
It's the polluters' job to clean it up, not ours.
Okay, thank you. No, uh, it's good. It's the polluters' job to clean it up. Yeah, thank you. No, the, it's the polluters' job to clean it up. This, this is, as far as I know, working with the polluters to help them do that. Well, and they're not doing it.
Okay.
They're not doing it, ma'am. So we, and we can vote this down. So we, we just have giant, massive pools in New Mexico, and they, and they keep growing because it's the number one revenue source for the state. So we can just, we can just close our eyes to it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So I'll call for the vote.
Just quickly to say, and thanks for the information, public information. You know, as Commissioner Casada is saying, it's not our authority to do this. I think this does make an important stance and message to our legislature about they need to resolve it and perhaps hold accountable the polluters. But thank you.
So I call a question. All those in favor? Aye?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
And that passes. We move on to item 10, approvals, county assessor. 2024 Property Valuation Maintenance Program Plan and Annual Budget. Okay, welcome, Mr. Assessor. Lara.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I am your Burnley County Assessor, and, um, I believe all of you have, um, received a copy of the Valuation Maintenance Program and Annual Budget. I'm here to report that we are still working very hard. The plan that we set out last year, um, continues to move forward. We removed, uh, some of the information from there, uh, as far as the four-year plan. As they say, sometimes, um, it is not to have set your goal, um, too high and not achieved it, but to have set it too low and actually gotten there. So we're one year behind on our residential property valuations, but we're quickly getting caught up on that. Large part of that is due to the high turnover rate, uh, in the re-canvassing plan. Nonetheless, we're moving very forward. The most, um, impactful, uh, that we have, I believe, in this year's plan is the continued work with, uh, the non-residential properties and valuation of the resident, non-residential properties. That includes commercial, uh, properties. We are seeking approval for, uh, a phased-in approach, uh, to the current incorrect statutes required, uh, for two reasons. One, um, the implementation of the program that was purchased by the last administration was not being able to be fully implemented last year, and we're still not quite there in this year. So that's one of the biggest ones. And second, um, a lot of the feedback that we have received from property owners, uh, and the lack of certainty, uh, that would be created by not having a fully comprehensible, implemented canvassing or, uh, modeling program. And so for that, we're actually working with, uh, NM Counties, uh, legislators, uh, assessors throughout the state, as well as the stakeholders, property owners, to see how we can create a legislative proposal in 2025 that would help us achieve the goals that we need to ensure that all property owners are treated fairly inequitable, that they only pay their fair share. But most importantly, that the residential homeowners are not disproportionately, uh, burdened with payment of critical county services like public safety, uh, fire, wastewater, and all of the things that, um, the county provides, as well as the other taxing authorities. So we are moving forward with that. The second, um, largest improvement that we're continuing to move forward is the substandard properties, um, and working with, uh, property owners, um, as well as in the downtown area to ensure that we have revitalization. We've also partnered up with other organizations like Area and assisting them with the possibility of a business improvement district in the downtown area. And those are showing to have small gains and small fruits right now, but we feel that in the coming years, uh, those substandard properties, um, will continue to see more revitalization, uh, in, in bigger areas as well. So with that, I would like to close and ask for your approval of the maintenance program and budget, and of course, stand for any questions.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions for the assessor? Commissioner Olivas, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Mr. Assessor. Always good to see you. A couple of questions. So you said that you're one year behind on your residential valuation program. What does that mean? Does it mean if somebody sold their house, takes a year to kind of catch up, or?
No. So we do all sales of transfers, about 10,000 to 12,000 transfers of residential property every given year. We value those immediately, and by state statute, we have to bring those to current and correct every single year. The properties that we don't get to as often are the properties that don't file any permits, uh, either to build or demolish or anything like that. They don't protest, or they don't, uh, transfer. So, uh, as you might remember or recall, um, last year, uh, when I came into, uh, office, we set up for a four-year plan. IAAO standards or industry standards require a four-to-six-year, um, plan to hit every single property in the county. When I was deputy assessor, we had a, an ambitious goal to do that. We did not meet that goal. The previous administration was on a 10-year cycle, um, and, and still was not able to reach 100% of the residential properties. And so, um, we've doubled our staff, um, and, and included some additional, uh, tools, in, including those that were approved last year for, uh, a CAMA or a Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal System. So, because we didn't, we weren't able to hire individually properties that haven't seen any transfers, haven't seen any building permits, haven't protested, or that we wouldn't otherwise get to, other than simply making sure that we've hit every single property. It is those properties that we want to make sure that we do assess, that we do make sure that we have correct characteristics for those properties, um, in a five-year, uh, time scale rather than, uh, a four or six.
Okay. I think I understand what you mean by the, the one year behind on, on the four years of five. The other thing is just more of a comment. You mentioned working with some partners to, to talk to the legislature upcoming session or sessions, uh, about valuation and, and making sure that, that things are valued accurately and fairly, and making sure that residential property owners are not carrying an undue burden. Uh, I really support that, want to be helpful to that in any way I can be. And I also just want to mention that, that one thing I, I hope we can consider in that, because I realize it's out of your purview. You're, you're limited by state statute, but is the fact that, um, our, our taxation of, uh, multifamily units and, and other sort of residential rental properties can be a big driver of rental increases, because, um, you know, property owners are going to pass on those taxes to their tenants. And so, of course, we want to make sure that those property owners are, are paying their fair, their fair share. But on the flip side, I think we also have to realize that those costs, by and large, get passed on. There is no requirement that property owners eat those costs or, or, you know, burden those costs themselves. And so I, I don't have a solution for you. I don't know how we solve that problem in a way that's equitable and balanced to both owners and residents of those facilities and the community at large. But I just think as we talk about the affordable housing crisis we have, that's a, a really tough nut to crack. So I just wanted to say that. I'm, I don't have an answer to you.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, you're absolutely correct. One of our stakeholders are, um, large-scale multifamily, uh, developers. Uh, and as you mentioned correctly, um, there is somewhat of a disincentive for development of new, uh, multifamily, uh, apartment buildings, because they are considered residential properties, and, and residential properties are, as we all know, on a 3% cap. So longstanding, you know, apartment building owners, um, have the benefit of being on a 3% cap. Newly constructed apartment buildings don't have that, um, you know, the, the benefit, right? They, they are assessed for the first time at a cost, at what it costs to build these, and have to compete with, um, the people who are on a 3% cap, as well as, you know, the disincentive to purchase, uh, one of these and, and remodel or expand, because then you, you go to current and correct. So it's almost a disincentive to, to, um, get into the apartment, um, industry or, or becau- business because of, of that disadvantage, uh, of not being, uh, a longstanding owner on a 3% cap. Sort of that, you know, welcome to the business, uh, tax that you would get. We are working with, um, developers, um, on both this, this stability, but also the predictability of what that cost would be, that tax burden, and so that they have some predictability and they can plan for it. We've seen some gains. We also want to make sure that we're treating them fairly inequitably. And so, um, based on some of those, um, conversations, um, and some sort of pilot projects that are coming online this year, we expect to have maybe four to seven new a, a large-scale apartment complexes, uh, being built in the next two to three years, with your approval, and again, contingency on some of these legislative approvals, uh, in the legislature. The other thing, um, would be what you've heard me talk about before, um, which is equitable disclosure, right? So that we treat, uh, homeowners and apartment complexes the same as we treat, um, all commercial or non-residential properties, that they, they provide a disclosure of what those sales are, so that we can have, uh, a good market that everybody can use, um, to defend the, the values and the assessments and have, again, um, those of you who, who are business owners or who, uh, it's not so much the, the tax or, or, or the fees, but it's the unpredictability of what those taxes are or what those fees would be that stagnate the ability to, to expand your business or to adequately prepare and plan for, for those expenses that, that really hinders, uh, continued, uh, economic growth.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
So I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
County Manager, concurrence of the Deputy County Manager for Behavioral Health.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This is one of the highlights of my job. I get to bring in front of you not one, but two, uh, Deputy County Managers, uh, for concurrence. So, again, uh, just, uh, I want to thank everybody for staying here, staff especially, because, um, you know, they know that this is really important. So first of all, I would like to bring up Dr. Wayne Lindstrom.
So Dr. Lindstrom?
So Dr. Lindstrom has over 50 years of experience in the behavioral health field. Dr. Lindstrom spent five years with the New Mexico Department of Human Services and was appointed as CEO of Behavioral Health Collaborative. He was recruited in 2014 by the state to assist with the aftereffects of the 2013 behavioral health shakeup, and was a key player in restoring the credibility of the behavioral health system for the state of New Mexico. Dr. Lindstrom earned his bachelor's degree in sociology from Bowling Green State University in 1969, a master's degree in community organization from the University of Pittsburgh in 1971, and a PhD in applied social sciences addictions from the Mandel School of Applied Social Sciences, Case Western Reserve University in 1986. Dr. Lindstrom will oversee the new behavioral health division to include our care campus, a direct service provider, and the Behavioral Health Initiative, which contracts for indirect behavioral health services. And also, he'll be taking over the tiny home village and our very own resource reentry center. The division has around 130 staff members. As per the Burnley County Charter, and as you all know, the Board's concurrence is a crucial step in the process of hiring a Deputy County Manager. Your approval is not only legal, a legal requirement, but also a testament of the Board's commitment to ensuring the best leadership in our county. So at this time, I respectfully request your support, and I stand for any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, County Manager, for your leadership, and thank you, Dr. Wayne, for applying and stepping in to take this position. I am so excited, um, being able to hear your ideas, your, the opportunities, and the expertise you bring that is both administrative and informed by evidence-based practices that can take our county to the level that we need to meet the communities. I'm so excited. This is an exciting day for me. Welcome, and I, I look forward to your leadership. Thank you, County Manager, and the team.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, uh, County Manager. Dr. Lindstrom, I am super thrilled to support your, uh, hiring, and, uh, between your education, your experience, real-world experience, knowledge of New Mexico, uh, I'm excited to what you're going to bring to the table, and, um, I support you and will continue to support you, whatever you need. So thank you for willing to step up to the plate.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Olivas, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you. I just want to thank our County Manager, Julie Marcus Baca, for, for bringing this concurrence forward to us. Uh, Dr. Lindstrom, I'm really looking forward to working with you in this critical role. I think you're a great pick. Kudos to our County Manager and to you for stepping up into, to a very big role, very needed. Uh, but I also want to recognize our staff that, that's out here. We have, you know, Pam Acosta and Sarah Spain, Jessica Hara Mio, um, who's not there, but, you know, we have a lot of staff that have helped get us here, uh, through the Behavioral Health Initiative and in various iterations. And so, um, I think that it's just great to have you on the team and want to support this absolutely.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome to Burnley County. Yeah, I think everybody kind of hit all the, the major points. It's a, it's a big job. It's a huge, uh, initiative that, you know, we put, uh, our money where our mouth is, and, uh, we had a commission, uh, pass the tax, uh, to address this, these, these issues in our community. And, uh, we've been, we've been looking for a leader, and it's taken a minute. And, uh, welcome, and I'm glad that, uh, you stepped up to do that. And, uh, we'd like to assist you from my office in any way, uh, looking into, into our district.
And I guess I'll just, uh, finish with this praise. Um, it's taken more than a minute, and we are so happy that you are here. It's long awaited, but I think it's been worth it. I think that we a- actually have staff that are ready, willing, able to work with you and, and as are we up here, um, with the commission. So, welcome. Did you want to say a few words?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners. When you've been around as long as I have, it's difficult to sum things up in a few words. I've, um, you know, having been a head of, uh, behavioral health for the state of New Mexico, uh, Burnley County is not new to me, per se. And I've, uh, read all of the various studies, reports, et cetera, um, that have led to the creation of potential authority in this position. And, um, I, I think this is an opportune time to, um, bring some new leadership to the table. And one of the advantages of not being a homegrown New Mexican is that I've worked around the country, and I've seen that there are indeed some, uh, new mousetraps that are, that are out there, and there's things that we can learn from other parts of the country. And as you mentioned, Commissioner, uh, there's a lot in the way of evidence-based practice, uh, but not only clinically, but in terms of primary prevention, um, as well as how to bring, uh, immediate access to services, um, and, um, how to leverage other resources rather than county funds as well. So again, thank you.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Did you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move to approve or concur.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Welcome, Dr. Lindstrom. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Look forward to working with you.
Okay, I'd like to, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, I'd like to bring up Donette Townsend. So, Ms. Townsend, a highly accomplished professional, has demonstrated her talent in a variety of capacities. She has led the ABC Community Schools as the Executive Director since 2018, and her recent promotion as to Director of the Community School Innovation and Strategic Partnerships Department is a testament to her capabilities. Her unwavering commitment to the residents of Burnleal County and her eagerness to learn are truly commendable. I have full confidence in her ability to respond effectively and provide exceptional service. Her extensive skills and potential to lead critical departments to make her the perfect candidate for this position. Donette served as an ABC Board Member from 2006 to 2012 and a staff member from 2012 to 2015. She currently serves as co-chair of the New Mexico Coalition for Community Schools and has over 25 years of experience in positive youth development, youth prevention and intervention, and community school development. Donette has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in counseling. Donette will oversee the Community Schools Division to include housing, planning and development services, communication services, parks, recreation and open space, and the Community Schools Initiative and Strategic Partnerships Department. The division has approximately 340 employees. So, as you know, this is a big decision. It's a crucial step in the process in hiring a Deputy County Manager, and your approval is appreciated. And we stand for any questions. I'm very, very proud of Donette, and she's been interim, as you all know, since Enrico left. She knows that she has big shoes to fill, but she's already started to fill them and has done a wonderful job. So, it's my pleasure to bring her before you for concurrence. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lewis, and then Commissioner Casada.
I'd like to start by making a motion for concurrence on this item.
Okay.
And I, thank you. I just wanted to say, again, great, a great leadership here by your County Manager, and really a great pick for this role, soon-to-be DCM Townsend, I think. You were one of the first county staff that I interacted with when I came onboard after being appointed to the ABC Schools Board. You know, you brought me in. You helped educate me on what exactly that board and that initiative does. I've gotten to see your passion for that aspect of the Community Services Department while I worked with you on that board. And I think, just given the depth and breadth of what that program does for our community, it's a terrific segue into the kind of larger role that the Community Services Division plays in so many ways, interwoven with the school's partnership. And so, I'm just excited to see your leadership elevated and your vision, and I think it's going to be a great fit for you and a great service to all of the county.
Commissioner Casada and Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wow, Donette, a long, long road from Elevate. When I started working with you, my hair was black. And I was probably about 30 pounds lighter. And I think this is very exciting for Burnleal County. I think me and you share that passion for children and that passion for, especially the children, who have been, you know, historically kind of underserved and forgotten. And you share that same vision with me. And so, it's always been an honor. And then when we met, again, at the ABC Schools, and I got to work with you as a school board member in community schools. And so, we've been on a journey together for a while here. And, you know, I'm glad to see you here, because I think Burnleal County and the children of Burnleal County are really going to benefit from your knowledge, your experience, and your true desire to change their trajectory into a positive light. And I'm excited to support you tonight.
Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Donette. Thank you, County Manager, for, you know, elevating Donette's work within the county. I also got to meet you my first year serving on ABC Schools Board, and it was, I just, at that time, I got to meet with several of the staff or the different school coordinators, and every time, they just had so much to say about your leadership and the success of those programs. So, when I hear directly from you, I'm like, I know it's true, but I've also got to experience your leadership and how you think and how you bring that lens of social determinants of health and inclusivity, and where's the most need, and how do we make the biggest impact with the bit of resources we have? So, it really, I was really worried when Enrico left, because he was amazing, but it really excites me to think that that department is going to have the lens you bring for all those great things. So, I'm extremely excited and full support.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, County Manager. And Ms. Townsend, I agree with everything everybody said. Since I first worked with you with community schools, I saw, what impressed me first and foremost when I first started working with you was your heart and your passion and your devotion to your role for helping children's lives in the role that you were in. And I'm not surprised at all that, you know, cream rises to the top. And so, just, I'm excited for the role that you're now filling, and I think you're going to hit it out of the park. So, thank you.
And Madam Clerk, wanted to say a few words?
I know it's unusual for the clerk to jump in on something like this, and I think you've done great with education and children, but we in the Clerk's Office are delighted to have you. You've shown up. You've showed us that you've got our back. You're interested in what we do, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I want to kind of echo that. I know that you can rock the world with the community schools, but what I've seen you take on with that same analytical eye and a stick-to-it-ness, is that a word? Is planning parks, recreation and open space, and those are new to you, but I have worked with you on those already in your acting role, where you have come through and you have really risen to the occasion. So, welcome, Donette. Thank you very much for accepting it. Thank you, County Manager, for your good choice. And I move concurrence. Did you already do that? I apologize. I'm getting punchy. So, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Did you want to say a few words, Donette?
Thank you for your support, and thank you, County Manager, for giving me the opportunity to work with this incredible team of leaders that I didn't really have connection to prior to this opportunity as interim. It's really exciting, and, as I said, they are incredible in what they do. But also, I look very forward to continuing to learn, serve, and lead with whatever we can to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Madam. Item 10D, Fleet and Facilities Management, Fire Station Number 36, Project and Community Workforce Agreement. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jared DeVet. I'm the Director of Fleet and Facilities for Burnleal County. We're presenting for your consideration and for your input the collective, I'm sorry, Community Workforce Agreement as it applies to Fire Station 36. Fire Station 36 is at the point in its construction process where we are getting ready to post for bid, and that means we need your input on whether or not we should apply the CWA. The CWA applies to any project that has a estimated construction cost of over $7 million. It's the opinion of the Fleet and Facilities Department that the CWA be not be applied to this project, and that's largely due to the experience that we have with Fire Station 66. Fire Station 66 is very, very similar in its design and construction to Fire Station 36. We've done that intentionally to try and save costs on design. What we found of Fire Station 66 was that we had a very, very minimal amount of bidders respond to that solicitation. The unions are simply not participating in these bids. There are currently 16 unions on the CWA, five of which are from out of state. We're not sure if that's impacting the respondents to these bids, but Fire Station 66 received, and its first bid, received two respondents, and only one of those bids was qualified. We had to rebid that due to some technical issues with the bid and the respondents' qualifications. It was essentially a Ma and Power organization that had bid on it to avoid the constraints of the CWA. They had very limited employee numbers, which can help you get underneath those requirements of the CWA, which is not the intent with a project of this size. At the rebid, we found that that Fire Station project came back at 41% higher than the estimated construction cost. That's significant. We're already seeing very high construction costs right now in the industry. To give an example, or an idea, rather, of exactly how much those costs, Route 66 Visitor Center was about $450 per square foot for that construction. We did not apply the CWA to that project due to constraints with the funding. There were some time constraints we were hoping to hit, which we did hit. That project came in largely under budget or at budget, and within the time constraints we imposed upon it, with the exception of some material supply shortages that were a result of COVID, which was expected, namely, some staircases and some freezer panels. Otherwise, that was a very successful project, something we're very proud of as Fleet and Facilities Department. We feel like we're turning over a very nice project to the city despite the operational struggles that they had. And the building itself is in amazing shape. Again, that one came back at about $450 a square foot. Fire Station 36, oh, sorry, 66 is at $906 a square foot under the CWA. We had 15 respondents to the bid at the Route 66 Visitor Center, and the final bid for Fire Station 36, I'm sorry, 66. We're trying to get that 66 for you instead of 37. That responded, or that bid only had two respondents. These are just not fair and competitive bids because of the participation levels that we're seeing from the unions. We've reached out to the unions. We've asked them to give input on why they're not participating. We've yet to hear any responses from them. Also, something to consider on this project is we've had some very strong interest from the community on Fire Station 36. They want to see a community room, like a small version of a community center on the front of that fire station. If this fire station comes back 41% higher than the estimated construction cost in the same manner as 66, that will be the portion of the project that will be cut. We can't cut the firefighter amenities. We have to cut the community room, which will be very disappointing to some of the individuals in that neighborhood that are very passionate about this project, about whether or not they allow a fire station there. This is also going to be our first fully-electric building, and we have plans and funding in place to purchase a fully-electric fire truck. So, we're really trying to make this a first for the county and a beautiful, sustainable building. And we are concerned that it'll be delayed, like 66 was for almost a year in the multiple-bid process, and that it'll come in over budget that we simply can't afford. And I stand for questions.
I have a question. So, the comparison of Fire Station 66, what was the total cost for 66?
66 came in at $10.8 million.
And this one of 36 is?
The estimated construction cost is $11.6 million. Apparently, our geotechnical survey came back that the river used to go right in that area before the city was developed, and so, we are going to have some foundational, I guess, differences between this one and 66. They're going to have to drive pylons down into the ground 60 feet in order to make it to where it won't sink, which is the exact problem that we have with Fire Station 36 right now. The current 36 is it's sinking due to that riverbed, and we want to make stations that's not going to have that problem 50 years down the line. So, there's slightly higher cost. Also, the addition of that community room increases the cost over 66 as well.
And my other question is a comment. You know, we heard from two unions today who said they are interested, who said that they really support us continuing with this community workforce agreement. And what do you say to that? You said you hadn't heard from them. So, we heard from them today.
We would love for them to show up to the bids. We've had zero interest. To give you an idea of other, this isn't just the Fleet and Facilities Department. The Parks and Rec Department, pros, prefer to be called pros, they had Mesa del Sol Project, which they had zero bidders the first time around, and then one bidder that finally came back 20% higher than the construction estimate. So, you know, the respondent on the, or the comment on the phone was that they're excited about APS and Facebook and Amazon. We believe them. They are doing those projects. They're not doing our projects. Either we're too small of projects for them or we simply have too strict of time constraints. We like our projects to be completed quickly. We feel that if we wait, the cost goes up. The longer we wait, regardless of what we do, the costs increase. And so, it's possible that these unions don't like our times constraints. I can only guess why they're not bidding. I mean, from 15 bids on a non-CWA project down to two on a CWA project is, it's indicative that they're not interested in working for us.
And the last comment I have is that they did mention, maybe it was to me separately, but that they have a city project, a project labor agreement with the city right now. Are you aware of that?
They do. We're in negotiations currently with the help of the county attorney to increase the cost or to increase the thresholds of our CWA. The city tried to do that, but it was turned down. They have a similar threshold to us. When the CWA was put into place, the cost per square foot that we were seeing was about $266 a square foot, and we set the limit, the threshold at $7 million. We are currently at $1,000 a square foot. So, relatively, we should expect the CWA to go up, the threshold to go up to $28 million. If we're four times as expensive per square foot, we should set the threshold four times higher than when it was set in 2020. We're not asking for that. We don't want to discourage the unions from bidding. And the unions can still bid on this project whether or not we impose the limits of the CWA. They could still come in and bid, just like everybody else. But if we do impose the CWA, we are limited to strictly the union shops, which, again, are pulling labor from out of state and also not responding to our bids.
Thank you. I don't want to hog the floor. Any other, yes, Commissioner Casada.
So, yeah, this isn't easy for me. You know, I'm the union member up here. So, the unions look at me and worry about decisions that I make because, you know, my union just got off a strike. And so, you know, it's hard to say, you know, that I want to get away from the CWA. But I think that this project, it's, and I want to say this as well. I'm not up here as a union member, right? I'm here as a county commissioner, and I have to make decisions based on the needs of my community, probably trump, you know, the, my commitment to being a union member. And then on top of that, this is, this is a, this is a public safety issue. This is a fire station. This isn't a Route 66 Visitor Center. This isn't a community center. This isn't any kind of amenity, you know? This is truly a needed fire station based on data that those, that area is underserved when it comes to public safety and responses, response times from our fire and our paramedics. That's why this project's on the table. That's why we're moving it forward. So, I'm caught between, you know, that and the other, but I think one outweighs the other, and that's public safety. And that is my commitment to my constituents or the constituents of Burnleal County, that public safety is a priority for me. So, with that being said, you know, I'm going to side on the side of staff this time based on because it is a fire station. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, oh. Barbo, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to be quick. I did have a quick question. Do the agreements limit the contractors who are able to bid on the work?
The collective, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the collective workforce, or, sorry, community workforce agreement. I have in my head it's collective. It's community workforce agreement does not, if applied, does limit the respondents to being union-represented shops. If they have more than three, Ken can clarify that. I believe it's three staff members on their staff to perform a certain task. So, in the example of Fire Station 36, if we have more than three people painting the building, that labor, if coming from a union, will come from, let me see where the painters, painters are out of Monterey Park, California. So, yes, they would pull workforce from that if they need more than three staff. Now, my hope is that the union shops will show up to this bid and show us that they can do a competitive bid without being, without us being imposed to do so.
If I may, Madam Chair. Thank you. This is a hard discussion. I come from a union home. I think, I also think and I see through all we're going through as a government that there, and what's happening in the world, right, is this labor, workforce struggle that we're trying to come overcome. And I often think of, what was it like when they ended child labor? Or what did it mean when all of a sudden, yeah, that when we couldn't, when businesses couldn't rely on child labor anymore? That had to have been a big shift. And I think of us as government having the opportunity to actually build, build the precedent, build the model and build the need. So, I hear you. I don't want to sacrifice public safety. I think we can do both. I can't support the removing of the CWA for this, but I... I can't support the removing of the CWA for this, but I, I hope we can find a resolution that works with unions and and the need to fill this public safety need. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. I just want to say, this would, this isn't not supporting the unions. I, this just makes it more competitive. It's free market. It, it forces a, an environment that the unions have to compete in if they want, but it, they haven't wanted to. And that's why I think we've got to put the county first. We've got to put our constituents first. We've got to pay our tax, put our taxpayers first. Without turning our back on the union, I would love for them to still participate in this. And if they got the bids, great. So, yeah, I support this. It's kind of a no-brainer. Thank you.
Commissioner Barbosa and then Vice Chair Olivas.
I'd like to make a motion to not remove the CWA agreements. And I just wanted to add to my comment before.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I just wanted to add to my comment before that, you know, with these, I, I, I hear everybody about that, but I also know when we go with companies that aren't unionized, it doesn't mean healthcare, we're not building our workforce with apprenticeships, paid apprentice, or apprenticeships. And so those are the other reasons why I support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Olivas, then Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, one thing that that I think was said, and I just want to really confirm this, you, my understanding of the CWA is that non-union shops, contractors, subcontractors can still bid on this. They just have to pay union scale and and operate by the same sort of guidelines. Am I off-base there, or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, Olivas Sartre, the Deputy County Manager for Public Works. The way the community workforce agreement is structured is that, except if there's more than three, if there's more than three workers working on a specific trade that is represented by the union, then the, the union, fifty percent of the work needs to be conducted by union shops and the re, the other fifty percent can be by non-union shops. So essentially, what ends up happening is on those trades where unions are represented, half the workers need to be, have to, half the workers can be non-union, the other half have to be. So we are requiring that they do use union wages. Now, for the non-union employees that are on, they are paid union, union scale and whatever the union wages at that point. Now, in the current market, we are paying prevailing wage, and in a lot of cases, that prevailing wage is above what is union scale at this point. So, you know, unfortunately, part of what, in in my opinion, what we've seen in here is the market is really playing a disservice to the CWA right now. There is so much work that's out there from the federal funding that we're seeing that, you know, we have agenda items later on that discuss that with additional state monies that are in here because of the oil boom. There is so much infrastructure money that's out there that we're, we're seeing a very, a tight shortage on the, the market. So that is also taking a lot of the union work and putting it on those bigger jobs. And that's what Director Jared alluded to a while ago is, is that, you know, the city, they bring in city, they bring in Netflix, they bring in U and M, that they, that they are working, that the CWAs are working there. But those projects are ten times the scale of what we're doing. So we're also dealing with that diminished workforce that's in here. And unfortunately, you know, in my belief, a lot of what's left in there isn't the union shop because they are on those bigger jobs.
Thank you for the, the detailed answer on that. You know, I, I hope that going forward, we can, we can have some conversations with the partners at the unions and, you know, representing our, our workers to make sure that there's an understanding there of, of how that should work and who can bid. And, you know, if they're paying union wages, prevailing wages, wages higher than unions. To me, the most important part of this is, is making sure that we're not just, you know, saying, public safety all the way, that's the only thing that matters. Because as we see with our behavioral health challenges and housing challenges, we also have to think about the downstream effects. And so making sure that we use our county resources to support our community. You know, that's why it's called a community workforce agreement, right? To say we're going to use county dollars to make sure that we're supporting local workforce development. So that means adequate wages, healthcare, benefits, and importantly, training, right? Apprenticeships and growing that workforce sustainably so that we have it in the future. That's why these are important, right? It's, it's not just, just to say that, you know, we need to, to get the project done, period. I think government does operate a little bit differently in that, that we have kind of an obligation to take the long view and look at the entire public health and safety. And that can include those benefits and those downstream effects of, of if you're not paying good wages. So the, the last thing I wanted to say is, on the difference between the Route sixty-six Visitor Center bid and, and this one, when was that bid, like calendar year?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, the completed bid for that station was, I have a date here.
Uh, the Route sixty-six Visitor Center.
Route sixty-six was on the Visitor Center?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. That was January twenty-first.
Of?
I'm sorry, January twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay, thank you. I mean, a lot's changed since then, as, as you get, as you all know. And, you know, being a contractor myself, I can, I can speak to that, that just, that the labor market is crazy. It's, you know, since twenty twenty, it's, it's just gotten worse, it seems to. And so, you know, I think that that direct comparison between that project and this project, or the project before that, the, the other station, is, you know, it's not apples to apples. They're different projects, and most importantly, there, it's, it's a different time, I think, just in, in the economy. And you mentioned, you know, Facebook and U and M Hospital and all these other huge projects that sort of came in line, online after that. We're competing with all of those. And so it's, it's tricky. It's, it's a really tricky situation. I, I understand where you're coming from and saying, you want to get this project done. I commend you for, for making this a sustainable building and, and putting that forward. But I also have to support a sustainable workforce. And, and I think that it's just important that we honor our commitment to that. And, and I think going forward, though, we do need to reach out to those partners and work with those partners. I know we had an initial meeting, the, the three of us, DCM, CDO White as well, talking about this, and our, our county attorney. And I hope we can kind of pick that up where we left off and, and make sure that we're really communicating to those partners. The challenge is that this is putting us under and try to figure out a, a solution, whether that's raising the cap or that's making sure that we broaden those terms to allow union scale, even if it's not union shop. I'm not sure what works, but to me, that's really important, that we have buy-in on all sides. And so for that reason, I, I really don't want to oppose you on this, but, but I have to stand with our workforce and our, and our, you know, contractors and employees that, that do this work, even though I, I understand the quandary it could put you in.
Madam Chair, I, I was up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Casada, then Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I was one of the commissioners that voted for the work, for the community workforce agreement. And during those discussions, I asked the union, and they said, look, I want to support this, but if you don't have union workers to work on that project, you cannot hi, they told me they will not hire outside the state, that they will hire within the state to make sure that local people are working on all of our projects, whether they're union or non-union workers. Now, what did you just tell me a minute ago? They hired someone from where to do the painting?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, they will be required to hire from out of state for five of the, of the sixteen unions. If they have more than three workers.
Yeah.
So they will be required under the CWA to bring people in from those union groups.
So earlier you told me that somebody was painting a project, and they were from?
They'd be from California.
They were from California.
Is where that union is based out of. International Union Painters and Allied Trades are out of Monterey Park.
And so those employees came from California? Or were they hired within the state of New Mexico?
We haven't had a situation like that yet. And we, we aren't certain exactly how the, the shops would handle that sort of situation. As of right now, our assumption would be that they'd operate with three employees or less to avoid having to bring staff in, which can delay the project and increase costs. You'd end up with overtime.
Okay. Because from what I understood you saying was that they brought in workers from out of state to work on the project. So if that's not the case, then they're staying true to, to their work.
The way it's structured, they'd be required to if they wanted to have a certain level of staffing.
And that they would not, they would not hire within the state of New Mexico. They would, if they, if they're.
They wouldn't be allowed to under the CWA if they had more than three employees, under certain union, with certain union groups.
So you're, okay. I, I need you to clarify that for me because I'm, we're in a quagmire here. When they don't have enough employees, to, the local union doesn't have enough employees to do the job, where would they hire those workers from?
Under the structure of the community workforce, oh, sorry, the community workforce agreement would require them, if, if, if it was a union or non-union shop, they needed more than three, either International Union of Bricklayers and Allied Craft Workers, Union of Painters and Allied Trades, Sprinkler Fitters, Brotherhood of Boiler Makers or Roofers, Waterproofers and Allied Workers, if they had more than three of any of those five categories, they would be required to seek help from these union headquarters, which are headquartered out of state. Whether they have employees in state, I, I don't know, but they would be required to go to these unions, which do not have sufficient representation in state.
Because I don't know. So I, I really don't know where those employees are coming from. But I would have to think that they would stay strong, stay, stayed strong to their commitment to the CWA, that they would make sure that those employees were from the state of New Mexico. So I'm hoping that. So this is my amendment. Or my, no, it's not an amendment, I'm sorry. It's my suggestion that we move forward and not, and, and, and stick true to the community workforce agreement. And I know, I know, since, it's since time is, it seems not to be an issue up here, and that workforce is more of a priority, that's okay, that's fine, that we put this out for bid and see how many union shops apply for this bid. Do it in a reasonably quick amount of time. And if not, quickly bring this back. And, and then we'll discuss it from there. Because at this point, we haven't really put it out for bid. So everything's kind of theoretical right now. So we're not quite sure if they're going to bid it or if they're not going to bid it. Let's see if they bid it. This is just my suggestion, see if they bid on it. And if they don't, well, then public safety needs to come after that, in my opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The correction I would have on that is you would have to rebid because we have to make a decision now that we are going to apply the CWA. And then you bid it with that understanding, is that right?
Madam Chair, and that's in the ordinance that allows for this, is we could put it out to bid, apply the CWA on it. If we don't re, receive responsive bidders, we could come back to the commission, state that and request permission to remove it at that time.
Thank you. Sorry, I cut in front of you, Mr., Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so, so several of these unions are located outside of the state of New Mexico, correct? Okay, so, that's not helping our local economy. The other thing, local contractors, I, I know several local contractors, they pay really good wages, they do play, pay insurance, they're required to by law if they have more than three employees, by federal law. There's, yeah, there's a lot of benefits. They do have journeyman. There's a reason why the private contractors, non-union, are attracting really good employees. And then they want these jobs. So, and I, I think our staff has the experience to say this isn't theoretical. They, they're coming before us because of the hangups they continue to get, but, because of this workforce agreement. So I think the, I think the arguments to support the workforce agreement, while noble, are, they're, they're just not serving our community. They're not serving our workforce. They are serving the unions, kind of, but not really, because even they're not applying for these. So if, it sounds like this is going to pass, if this gets bid out to a union, great, then I'm happy because we're moving forward. If it doesn't, I, I don't know why we're going through this process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barbosa, then Commissioner Olivas.
Just last, I, I think, well, Mike, I had questions about, you mentioned about the community front of the fire station. I guess I hadn't heard of that before. If that, if this does come back to us, or I'm just, now I'm a little concerned, like, do we have staffing? Have we budgeted for staffing for a community center at a fire station? What is that, the idea around that? And that, I don't think that is about our community workforce agreements. I just, because you mentioned it, and if it comes back to us, I'd like information.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Barbosa, the, the community in that area is, is very vocal. They like to tell us what they want to see in any construction project. And part of the acceptance of our zoning contingency there was that we would create a, a community presence, a, an area for them to have fire-related or even community-related training of any kind. And they're very passionate that it include that as part of the design. And just, just to address the, the idea that we put this out for bid and see what union shops come back, I think it's a phenomenal idea, but I would also like to suggest that if the costs come back where we're seeing them, forty percent higher than other competitive bids, that that be a determining factor as well on whether, whether or not we return and rebid without the CWA. It would simply bankrupt the project. We wouldn't be able to, to build the fire station if it comes back that high. We don't have funding for it in place currently. And not only that, we, we'd cut the community room and then still have to look for additional funding if it's forty percent higher in the same vein as, as Fire Station sixty-six.
Commissioner Olivas, did you have a comment?
Yes, quickly, I would just say on the community room thing, if we've made a commitment through the zoning process and verbally, frankly, because I'm assuming there was community meetings, that kind of thing, we've got to find a way to honor that, period. Like, we, that's, that's our word. I mean, we, we have to stand by that. The other thing that I, that I just wanted to say on, on the unions' headquarters being out of state, I mean, I think most unions' headquarters at the national level are not here, right? All of them. Now, I know some of them have like a stronger local presence, I, I B W, plumbers, pipe fitters, carpenters, right? But to varying degrees. And the, the last thing I just was wanting to ask is, to our county attorney and to the folks right here, have we, when we did last met, there was a discussion of having a meeting with Mr. Brian Condit with Building Trades. Have we met with him? Like, because I feel like there's just a lot of questions that we're asking up here that I think we need to make sure that that dialogue is, is kind of parsed out. And I, I'm not sure that, it's not to say that I don't think our staff are capable, but you all don't work in those union shops and, and in those unions and with them. So answering for them, you, you can't do it. I understand you're, you're kind of limited in what, what answers you can give. So anyway, I'll, I'll ask.
Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I'll address the three questions you asked. First and foremost, we would still honor the community room, we'd just have to do this in a phased approach. So we would have to come back with a second phase and we, and, and construct that once we have funding identified for it, pull it out. Second, to your point, and, and I think what you brought up could have clarified a lot of the discussion in here, the, the unions that were mentioned that are out of state, they are, we consider them out of state because they do not have a local. And when they identified what, basically what local would we go to, they identified the, their headquarters as the local for New Mexico. So this is why we're saying this. You normally would go to the local that was here, and they would provide it. And that's the efficient way to do it because they're here, they're in Albuquerque, they're ready to work, you know, they could pick up, they can go to the, the local that morning, grab the three that are sitting there, ready to roll, put them on the job and go. And that's, I think, the intent of the CWA is, when we did meet with, when we went through and were developing this, we had peer exchanges that were set up through federal highway administrations, where they did have, on, on their level, they call them project labor agreements, P L As. And we met with, with some entities, local and state DOT entities from Michigan, from Washington State, and there was a third one that I can't remember off the top of my head where that was from. But they said that was the benefit. If somebody didn't show up on site and they were three laborers short, because those are strong union participating areas, they had no problem. Fifteen minutes, half an hour, whatever it took to get that guy from the local to the job site, they had somebody covering them. And they had those benefits. That's what we're lacking here is, for especially those ones that don't have a local here, we can't draw on that. And so this is when, when Jared was saying that we would expect that they would come from a local, and that one's out of state, that's where we were saying, we were expecting them to come out of state unless they had some link here. And then finally, on, on the request to meet with Mr. Condit, we have asked that, Ken's been trying to set that up. We had fully intended to try to get those meetings before we came for this request. Unfortunately, we just haven't been able to schedule that in there. But that is fully our intent because, again, we really want to.
But that is fully our intent because again, we really want to understand what the situation is. So if we need to tailor the CWA program and our approach on how we're doing this to make it work within our current environment within our our county, based on the situations, we do want to do this. I myself, I'm, I I came out of a union house. My mom was part of the Union of the Guards in Los Alamos, and when I was in elementary, I went through a nine-month strike. We did that, so I understand where this is coming from and I, you know, I'm, we're not against this. However, we are cha-charged with a job to do and to deliver for the county and its residents, and that's what we're trying to do here tonight.
Thank you.
So Elias, are you ready to go to bid on this? I mean, you are you are waiting for our determination on whether this should be a community workforce agreement?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Madam Chair.
And would you, um, um, would you say that it would be worthwhile to have that meeting with Mr. Condit before we make this determination? I mean, I think that you we've heard from him today. We've heard that that, uh, the unions back this, uh, CWA program for a reason. And this seems like a project that it it makes sense to, um, apply this work, uh, community workforce agreement. To me.
Madam Chair, if we could have that meeting within the next two weeks and see if it could help, I think that's about all we can, that's all, that's really what we're kind of willing to give on this. Um, kind of like Commissioner Casada stated, I think we kind of know where this may go today. So if we can't do that within the next two weeks, then I think we apply the CWA, see what what results of that. And if we end up higher or don't get responsive bidders, we come back and ask to have it removed. So I I so unless we can really, I I and and I know, uh, our county attorney's been trying to work with him. And so I think if we can get that within two weeks, then we can have that and and march forward. Um, but I don't know if that's enough time for us to get back on the agenda. So I, my personal opinion, let's go ahead and let the vote fall where it is. We can schedule those meetings and roll, kind of roll with with what happens.
So so I'll call the question. Um, and the motion was to apply the community workforce agreements for the fire station, uh, number thirty-six. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And those opposed?
No.
And that passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the honest discussion, I think this is very important and we're all with you in, um, moving this forward. Finance, American Rescue Plan at Denise Benavides, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Denise Benavides, the principal financial analyst for the finance division. I have Brian Lopez, the director of technical services, Jarrett Divitt, the director of fleet facilities, and D C M Ringan with me. Um, so the first, um, agenda item is to talk about reallocating funds. The total ARPA funding available for new project initiatives is a total of nine million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. This funding is a result of five million, seven hundred and fifty thousand noted in the two motions below if approved, unearmarked funds of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. And motion one, if you recall, three million dollars approved for reallocation at the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four agenda, item number two-one-nine-two-seven. So the commission originally approved N I nineteen, the nine fifty four street apartment senior housing building purchase on agenda item two-zero-five-eight-six by the B C C on August twenty-second of twenty twenty-three in accordance with expenditure category two-point-one-five in the amount of five-point-four million dollars. So due to the cancellation of the purchase, staff res- requests this funding to be reallocated to another eligible ARPA project initiative. The second motion is to, um, the commission approved N I zero-one Care Campus Young Adult Recovery Project Program on agenda item one-six-six-one-six by the B C C on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in accordance with expenditure category one-point-one-zero in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this one is due to a delay of both the phases of that project. We have met with the Care Campus to discuss, and this was the compromise that we were able to come up with. So staff recommends that this funding be reallocated to an eligible ARPA project. I'll stand for questions.
Any questions, Ms. Benavides, yes, Commissioner Barboa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted clarity on the, um, Care's campus, young adult, there was, it's because it could, what is the reason for the inability to?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, so initially there was a, uh, construction phase and there was a program phase of the young adult program. The construction phase was delayed, thus delaying the program. So initially, it was supposed to start in January of this year, and it has been delayed now to July. So we were trying to get them to find other expenditures that they could use, and this was the compromise. If you recall it, our April first meeting that we had with you, the initial amount was four hundred thousand. So we felt like they were able to find some additional, um, expenditures, so it has been reduced to three hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
Commissioner, this is.
I move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Item F, finance again, um, it's Benavides.
Madam Chair, this one is to approve some projects with that reallocated funding that was just approved. So the first motion is to approve five-point-two million dollars of ARPA funding for I twenty-five, N M five-hundred Rio Bravo Boulevard and Second Street improvements in accordance with expenditure category nine-point-one surface transportation projects. This funding will enable Bernalillo County Technical Services Department to complete the total reconstruction of the intersection. The project will provide the necessary investments to improve pedestrian safety and roadways to link surrounding neighborhoods to the station area as well as improve cross crosswalk markings and signals. Additionally, the project will also improve vehicle flow, reduce traffic congestion, address physical deficiencies of the existing transportation facilities, provide lighting improvements and better access to the rail runner facility. This project is located in District Two, and Brian Lopez is here if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I move for approval.
I'll I'll second that, and and I do want to say that I I wanted to thank the the staff and Shirley and Ms. Benavides for really working through this, Mr. Lopez. Um, we've we've really talked this through. I think the really important thing that you've done here tonight is bring forward really what the balance is in our ARPA account, as as I call it, I don't know if that's the best way to say it, but and moving forward to complete these projects. Hopefully, they will all go through, there's still some money for us to consider, but so I'm in favor of this. And Commissioner Barboa had a comment?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, I'll try to be quick. I, um, I'm in favor of all this too. I just see that on number four, it sort of names the New Mexico Veterans Integration Center or Albuquerque-Berly Water Authority Project and asking the county manager to analyze the feasibility of those two. I, um, just want to mention that and I, because the, we have been a major, um, funding for the New Mexico Vic project, the Veterans Integration Center, it is in the traditional African-American community that is close to my home, that I grew up near. We, I held, I I really blame the city, everybody's heard me say this, that the process for that community to be heard in this, um, in the development of the New Mexico Vic didn't happen, so it's caused tension. That community has, many of the folks that came out have lived there for fifty years. Um, some were for it, some were against, and they didn't really get their day in process. I don't blame that on the county. I just want to ask my colleagues and the county managers, we search for that, um, that community deserves at least a completed beautiful project in their neighborhood. So I'm just pleading with folks as we think about the feasibility of, I mean, I hate to pit it against anything for Water Utility Authority, um, but that community, through no fault of the county, um, really does deserve a completed beautiful project. And I hope that that's the route we can take.
And and I'd like to add to that, that that part of our discussion, a big part of our discussion was how can we find some of this ARP money to complete the Vic? It was a really important discussion. And as we prioritize, you know, budgeting is the art of the possible, I think, you know? And we really found that these projects that are here before us, um, are valuable for this ARPA funding. And we are going to try and find that money to complete the Vic. And so that's that, I just wanted to make sure I said that publicly too.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Uh, first of all, just a point of clarification, are i- is this motion for all of these or this is just for the Rio Bravo Gap?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, it's just for the motion one for the Rio Bravo and Second Street improvements.
Okay, um, I get, I I think I'll just make a comment now and and hold my comments on all the rest of them. Um, I I'm going to support all of these, I think these are good shovel-ready projects to to echo what Commissioner Barboa said. The Vic is really an important one, and since we've been a strong, the strongest funding partner, you know, I think we should carry that through if we can, if it's going to be shovel-ready, if it can be completed within the timelines, because I know your team really looks at all that. Um, and I wanted to thank you for this nice pie chart distribution, uh, laying out the specific amounts by district that have been allocated for ARPA funding. And, uh, I, like I said, I'm going to support these projects benefiting primarily residents in districts, uh, two and four because they're good projects. We're county commissioners, not district commissioners, although we are elected by districts. So I think they're important projects and and I'm going to support them. But I hope my colleagues will remember this pie chart when we start talking about our bond cycle and when we start talking about allocating other funds and, you know, reserves and all those kinds of things, that we always remember that, um, you know, what's what's ready now in District Two, you know, we we also need to be looking at what's needed in District Five, what's needed in District Three. And so I I just, you know, hope that we'll all remember the, uh, the the allocations here. It it doesn't need to be a tit for tat, but absolutely, I I hope my colleagues will remember this when we when we get to that stage in the future.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I wanted to say that when we initially got the funding, that was our thought process is that we looked at the projects that we had and we tried to evenly as possible distribute between all the divisions, I mean, the districts because Bernalillo County is made up of five districts. So we wanted to try to make sure between the infrastructure and the non-infrastructure projects that we did that. And the same thing with the Vic, I just wanted to let you know, we met with them last Thursday. We invited them to our core team meeting, which has public works, procurement, accounting, finance. And, um, we met with them and they are going to submit their proposal to us, a complete proposal by this Friday. And so we're already actively looking at different things, recognizing that we've already been a major contributor and, um, looking at what we can do to to see that project through completion too, based on what they submit. So I just wanted to add that as a comment.
So item, motion one has been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion two.
So the second motion is three million dollars of ARPA funding to enable Bernalillo County Technical Services to complete the fourth phase of the project, which will develop the area from Basile del Norte to Alameda Boulevard. This also includes the reconstruction of the, um, collapsed Homeland Crossing. The current funding is programmed in the statewide transportation improvement program for construction with federal F H W A funding and county matching funds. Given this is a pathway anticipated to be used by a very large pedestrian population, all ADA and PRO-WAC guidelines will be closely followed, ensuring full compliant pathway to ensure the trail provides access to all amenities for residents. This project is located in districts one and four, and this project is for the Alameda Drain Trail Project.
I move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the folks who came out and advocated tonight for this. And, um, so important for all the reasons that were explained and including bikes and trails and the health of our community, I'm thankful.
And I'd just follow up, but the, again, this is one of those projects that it's a multi-jurisdictional partnership, which is why it's going to be such a good long-distance trail through through the county, crossing the city, so. Any other comment, Commissioner Benson?
I need to say something, I'm a new resident to St. Francis, but throughout the valley, these roads, as the expansion has happened, there's a lot of.
Madam Chair, the speaker can come to the microphone, otherwise we can't hear him on the broadcast, but I defer to you.
Thank you, and I will, I will speak to you after because public public comment is completed. But thank you for coming and thank you for supporting the project and your concern for public safety. But Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I thank you for your support for all of these, um, wonderful constituents. We've been working a long time on this project. And, yeah, looks like we're going to get it. And, um, yeah, of course, Commissioner Olivas, I will remember this, I'm going to remember everything about tonight. Of course I would, including the hiring selection that omitted two entire districts from the hiring committee. Thank you.
We'll call the question, please, all those in favor?
Aye. Yes.
And that passes, item three.
The next motion, sorry, the next motion approves seven hundred and fifty thousand of additional ARPA funding to enable Bernalillo County to make up the shortfall to complete the project. This project was originally approved by the B C C on January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three in the amount of three million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. The funding will enable the county to improve and expand the South Valley Economic Development Center facility and the surrounding land owned by Bernalillo County. The core purpose of the S V E D C Business Incubator is to assist and foster businesses to develop from a fledging level to a subs- sustainable level by providing support and guidance that includes business space, expertise and tools. I stand for questions.
Thank you.
I move approval.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded, any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Yes.
The final motion is to request the county manager to begin the analyzing the feasibility of the project initiatives totaling five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents identified as the New Mexico Veterans Integration Center or the Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Water Utility Authority Project. All eligible projects must comply with the obligation timeline of the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and expenditure timeline of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, the U.S. Treasury final rule and the county staff standard operating procedures. If determined ARPA-eligible, the project will be presented to the commission for final approval. If deemed not eligible, the commission will, the items will be brought back to the commission to request for reallocation. I stand for questions.
Thank you, I move approval.
Second.
Second. Been moved and seconded, any further comment, questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you again, Ms. Benavides, appreciate your hard work. Item G, procurement and business services intergovernmental agreement, Lisa Sedia White.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The item before you is a, uh, motion to approve, um, amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Albuquerque to address the shared funding for the operations and maintenance of the Route sixty-six visitor center and required, uh, reporting. The county, um, transferred ownership of the Route sixty-six, um, visitor center. Deed was filed with the clerk's office on March, um, twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four. And, um, kind of taking you back, um, the original agreement, I G A, was executed in, um, November of twenty twenty. And that was the agreement between the city and the county to, um, on planning, designing, construct- constructing and also, um, once the facility was completed, to enter into, um, an operations gr- agreement, um, on shared funding. Amendment number one of the I G A, uh, was executed in twenty twenty-two and that was to establish a budget of five hundred thousand dollars where both the city and county would share equally the sh- the of two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, apiece. So the amendment number two that's before you today is to continue the, um, shared funding , um, with the city, um, and, uh, in the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And, um, the commitment would be contingent on funding availability. I stand for questions.
Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Madam Chair. I move for approval.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Benson?
I've got a question. I'm not, I'm not going to second this yet, but I'll I'll wait.
Your question?
Uh, what's the? Uh, what's the expense that the city is putting forward to this?
Um, I'm sorry, um, Commissioner Benson, I couldn't hear you.
What is the amount that the city is contributing for the upkeep?
It would be the same, two hundred and fifty thousand. For a cumulative amount of five hundred thousand per year.
Thank you.
I have a clarification question on that. My understanding is that we've transferred this, you, you said that we transferred this so, uh, for, for no cost. We've, we've given it over to the city. The Route Sixty-Six Visitor Center has found a home with the city. And that, I understand, is gonna be with probably the Arts and Culture Department. So they're going to have to, uh, most likely appropriate through their operating budget the financing of, of operating this, this visitor center. Do you, is, do you know something different?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, conversations that we've had with the city, starting, um, back in, uh, December was, um, they were really, um, the operations, um, upon transfer of the facility was going to fall under a certain, um, city department. But, um, they were, um, they were counting on the city continuing, um, the shared funding of operations.
So, when, when this, this was before my time, when the, when this project occurred, but the, the idea was always that this is gonna be a self-sustaining, um, event venue. And that didn't work out, a- as, as we know, and, and that, you know, sadly. But, but we have put in, um, five hundred thousand, half a million already for operations for the first two years in, under your amendment number one.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, the county, um, has allocated, um, since the inception of the Intergovernmental Agreements, which was amendment number one, establishing the budget, we've only contributed two hundred and fifty thousand towards the operations, with the city also contributing two hundred and fifty thousand.
And, okay, but the other part of the, um, county contribution that, that I got from, from your office, from, from Ms. Reagan, is, is that something in the amount of, uh, three point seven million for the capital costs. And you couldn't put a, a figure on, because we, we were the project manager. And, and, um, Mr. Archuleta said it was a, it was a, a big project. We had a lot of sweat equity, I guess, is what the county has put into this. So it's truly, it's been a partnership in getting it to where it is. And, and I, I'm happy that, that we're giving the, the city the keys. I, as I said, I think it, it has found its home with the, the city now. And I have all faith that the, the city's budget is much larger than the county's. It's one point four billion. And so operations, to me, should now go to the city, because the county has contributed, um, in the past. And so that's just a, a statement of fact, I think.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the city is still looking, uh, and, and there's, there's reasons why it went to the city and not from the county, because it is gonna be an event space. And there will be, uh, still a private partnership with providers. So there will still be someone going in, running the taproom, paying, paying money for that. And then there'll also be the Event Center, which somebody will run. And, uh, will be, it'll be a business that'll be, also be in there, that will be paying, uh, uh, rent. So this, so realistically, we don't know what it's gonna do, right? So I agree with you, we're, we're in this kinda haze, we're not quite sure what it's gonna do. But that's still the plan for the Route Sixty-Six Visitor Center. So it will be bringing in money. We really truly believe that that community does not have a facility like that, and that they will take advantage of a facility like that, uh, once it's up and running. We just couldn't do it, because it was alcohol involved, and, and the county really had heartburn when it had to do with, you know, dealing with liquor licenses and whatnot. And the city does that already through a lot of their stuff, the Convention Center, for an example. They do partner and, and have that kind of capability. We did not. And, uh, you know, so we weren't able to really run it to where it was gonna actually generate money, because we weren't willing to do those sorts of events. Now they, they are going to be able to do that through the city. And yeah, it was very unfortunate that we couldn't get to that point. But that is the, still the game plan, from what I understand, on the city side, to continue to keep doing that. So then I think maybe in, in, in four or five years, hopefully you guys can come back and look at what really the budget and what really needs to support it. And, and hopefully, and I'm gonna be very hopeful here, that it's not, that you're not contributing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to operational, but that it is bringing in the money to provide those kind of expenses for maintenance, upkeep, the things that we are responsible for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some serious concerns about this, the viability of this facility, which was raised years ago. And, uh, I wasn't on this commission at the time, but I know that Commissioner O'Malley asked for a, a market study. And, you know, to summarize that, that study said that this facility would never be self-sustained, based on, you know, the market projections, because, um, I'm sorry, I have the floor, Commissioner. I have the floor, Commissioner. So, the, the market study, you know, indicated some very serious things. And, and basically said, you know, that a subsidy is gonna be required for a long time on this facility, a public subsidy. And, and we subsidize a lot of public facilities, and, you know, that's, sometimes that's what happens, right? Government steps in and provides a service that, uh, the private market either isn't able to provide or isn't able to provide at a cost that the market can support. So, you know, I get that. It, it's really kind of a question of, do we want to do that in this case? Because this is not a core service of, of county government. It's no longer owned by Bernalillo County. The other issue I have here, and, and I, I don't think there's any city representative here that's actually requesting this funding, um, or, or here to answer questions. And so, you know, as we transferred this, I asked some questions of, of our county leadership team about this facility, its usage. And there was actually like, something like, I wanna say it was four months, six months of, of reports that were not filed, that were part of this contract, where, you know, the contractor's supposed to tell us how many visitors they had and how many events they held. They didn't give us that information. And on the months when they did provide the information for a facility that cost us, like, you know, close to twenty million dollars as a, as a community, not us as a county, but the city put in money, the legislature put in money, the county put in money, very expensive facility, the numbers were, like, completely underwhelming, you know, sub-one-hundred people in a month. Sometimes, like, you know, double digits, mostly double digits. So I'm wondering, is the city gonna use that same operator? I know that we terminated them, but that was also part of the, the process of moving this. So, um, I just have a lot of questions about sort of, okay, if this, this is supposedly gonna be viable, how are we gonna get to viability? How do we ensure that there's safety when this facility's a little ways away from the developed area? And we're, we're saying that the liquor license is gonna save us, because it'll draw people to, to drink? Is that really a responsible behavior to encourage? In a place where we know that people are not gonna be biking or walking to this, at least right now? If, if the area develops, that could be different. I just think there's a lot of questions here, and, you know, we, we gave the city a very nice facility. And I, I think that we need some more answers before we would, before we should consider continuing that subsidy without knowing who's gonna operate it and how they're gonna bring it to be viable.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, um, uh, a valid point, right? We did get rid of the person and the group that came in. You're right, that, that did not work out, that did not work out. Uh, and, and the reports are correct. It's only open a couple of days out of the week, so you're not really getting numbers. You're not getting numbers of a facility that's gonna be open seven days a week eventually. So, but the, but the market analysis, I wanna go back to. It did show that it will be viable, and it would be viable within four to five years. That's why Commissioner O'Malley voted for it and supported it. The market analysis shows within that area, we do not have, uh, facilities or amenities like that. And to say that that part of the city is not grown, um, I think you should go drive around. It is full of nothing but homes, and where opportunities for community engagement, for businesses, for jobs, for economic growth, those are empty lots. Those are the things that are empty lots, not the places where there's homes. Plenty of homes, overcrowded schools, I know that for a fact. That is my district. That is where I live. But, that being said, I understand the hesitancy. I do. I get it. We aren't where we wanted to be based on many different, uh, obstacles. One, we didn't get the keys till years later, right? Because of, uh, supply chain issues. We couldn't get into the building that didn't have stairs. We couldn't bring in a provider to do catering. And so it's not a place to just go drink and get drunk and drive down the street. This is the same kind of facility that, how the Convention Center works, where you can do functions, where you, your kids can get married and have a place to s- to have a beautiful wedding. The views up there are amazing. It's a space for communities to gather. We have an amphitheater, so we could do daytime things that we do in the South Valley. It's gonna be the place for Westfest. It's gonna be the place for a lot of things that we have never had, uh, a facility to do before. That is what that facility's gonna do, but you're right, it's not there, it's not open, there is no numbers. But like I'm saying, if you be patient, if you give it a shot, if you give it a chance, now that we can do that and bring in these other people to run the different parts of the facility to see how that brings in income. That's how the convention, Convention Center exists. That's how a lot of the museums and stuff exist. The city knows how to do that. That's why we thought it was a better idea for the city to do this project and not the county.
And, and Madam Chair, um, members of the commission, Commissioner Casada, you are, you are correct in that, um, when we negotiated this contract, um, there were, I mean, substantial completion didn't happen. Keys weren't turned over until, turned over till, like, June of 2023. Various, various issues, um, just supply chain. But it was always our intent, um, to fund this particular operations, um, not, um, for, forever. But our intent was to fund it for three to four years until it did, you know, there was, there was, you know, that, that we were able to bring in the revenue. There were challenges with, um, the operator in finding a taproom operator and also a bank, a banquet room operator. And the discussions that we had with senior le- leadership at the, the county, at the city level was, it made sense, being that they do run a Convention Center, they do have liquor licenses, that the operations would, um, would be better with the city operating. And so our discussions with city, um, leadership were that, um, it would be kind of just a, a switch of, of ownership is, is what leadership, um, communicated with the city. But you are correct. That was, that, that our, our intent was that it would be self-sustain, uh, sustainable after so many years. It was never that we were gonna continue to fund it.
I guess what I would say is, is that the, that the county has done, um, a very good job of partnering with the city. I mean, I'm, something like four million, plus the cost of land. And we have now, I mean, plus the sweat equity is what I call it. I mean, really working on this project to bring it to completion. And, um, we have given it over to the city. And again, I would just say, it's, it's found a good home. I mean, they can do this kind of work. They are in their budget process as we speak. And the last time I checked, it was a one point four billion dollar budget for, including everything, operations, everything. So I, I think that two hundred and fifty, or quarter of a million dollars annually in perpetuity, as budget allows, is what we're signing off on here, and, and I have a concern with that. I think we could put a quarter of a million dollar in housing in perpetuity and not even scratch the surface on that need in this area, in my district, in downtown. So, um, tho- those are just my, my comments. Commissioner Benson?
Madam Chair, um, just comments and commission is, you are, you are correct. The county did, um, there were, there were several years that, that we, uh, put in to, um, you know, this, this project. And we were very excited about, um, the outcome. In fact, um, on the design, I think we even won a design award. So it's a beautiful, as Commissioner Casada was saying, it is a beautiful, beautiful facility with, um, beautiful views. And, and we're just, we're excited for, um, the city to kind of take it to another level. But I, I wanted to, yeah, because we, we all worked on this project, so.
Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Casada, I agree that, uh, the district, your district needed this project. I love the building. I've been to it. It's beautiful, um, and I think it will be a success. My lack of support in this is really just the budget for the city versus the county. Yeah, and I'm somewhat skeptical to just partner with the city, go and have Z's on, on just everything. And so, uh, this is part of that. The city has much bigger budget. I think it will do well, and I think this will be a, a shining star up there. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but I've no doubt it'll hit, it'll happen. So, that's it. Not the, my lack of support for the project, just the, the budget item.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
So I think my, my final comment is, and, and I, and I get it. I, I'm not, you know, you win them and you lose them, especially when it's just project-based, and it has nothing to do with all of us doing stuff together. This isn't a together thing. This is a district thing, and I get it. So I will question the millions of dollars we give to the city and all the other projects as well. Because if they have that big of a budget, then why are we giving, um, are we going halfers on anything? To be honest with you, right? Because they're the ones with the money. So, that's just my final, my final thought, that, you know, I'll have, I'll have, uh, my comments when we continue to try to partner with the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? So that fails for lack of a second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Casada.
So what happens with, now that we've broken the agreement with the city? What's the next step for, for the city?
So, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Casada, um, we, um, we have an intergovernmental agreement that will have to, um, terminate. The city, um, as of March twenty-seventh of twenty-four, um, they are the official owners of the facility.
What are the legal ramifications of us breaking an agreement?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. County Attorney.
What's before us is an amendment to an agreement.
It's, it's an amendment to increase the funding. It's, uh, or not increase, but it's amendment to continue the funding beyond.
So this isn't a, 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 a breaking an agreement. We're, we're being asked to do more.
We're, we're, what we're asking on amendment two was to, um, continue the funding. So your, your vote today would be to, if you choose to not continue the funding, then it would be that we're not continuing the funding.
And I guess I would just, uh, comment, Commissioner Casada, that this isn't a lack of support for partnerships with the city. The problem is, is that this is a recurring operating commitment. And that's what the large budget that I'm talking about the city has. They are in the throes of their operating budget, and they have accepted this free of charge from the county. They should be able to appropriate that operating, continuing funding for this, this project, and.
And, Madam Chair, um, I, I wanted to, um, just, um, Commissioner Casada, you, you had asked. Amendment Number One of the Intergovernmental Agreement that established the shared funding of two hundred and fifty thousand city, two hundred and fifty thou- thousand county, does have an appropriations provision, which states that, um, if we don't, the county commission doesn't appropriate funds, then, um, the funding stops. So that is a provision in the amendment number one, and amendment number two was to continue.
So then we don't really have an agreement, though?
Then we wouldn't have.
So there's not an intergovernment agreement?
We have an
So if we wanted to use the facility, we couldn't, because we no longer have an intergovernment agreement?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, we, we would, um, we wouldn't have an agreement. We would have to, um,
So we wouldn't have no rights to use the facility for a county, nothing?
No.
Okay, alright.
Uh, Ms., Madam Chair?
Commissioner Benson?
Sedia White. Would there, uh, could there be legal ramifications for the city to us for ending that agreement?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Benson, um, no. Um, Madam Chair, members of commission, Commissioner, um, Benson, um, no.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're we're done on this item. Thank you. Um, it's very late. It's a quarter till nine. We had one final um presentation. And we have deferred this once before. And so we would like you to come forward and and talk about your experience uh with the um sorry, Office of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives Miami Dade model.
Alright, uh, so, good evening, everybody. Thank you for hanging in there. Um, we understand that it's late. We're gonna keep this very brief, condensed. Um, a lot of our slides were included in your agenda packet. So some of those, as we referenced, uh, feel free to please go back, look at those. If there's questions, we're happy to meet separately. Um, so tonight, uh, my name is Pamela Costa. I'm the senior manager with the Behavioral Health Initiative. And tonight we're here, I'm accompanied by Sarah Spain, the transitions, transition planning services manager. Unfortunately, Diane DeSalle and Jody Jepson were unable to make it, but they accompanied us to Miami, Florida. Um, in October twenty twenty-three, several individuals from New Mexico, um, have you hit this? Okay. Um, several individuals from New Mexico and uh on the screen you'll see there was um several people from New Mexico, representatives and other commissioners from other counties. Um, visited Miami, Florida to visit the Eleventh Judicial Circuit Criminal Mental Health Project, which was established in two thousand to divert individuals with um su- serious mental illness or co-occurring serious mental illness and substance use disorder away from the criminal justice system into comprehensive community-based treatment and supportive services. The program operates on two primary components. Prebooking jail diversion consisting of crisis intervention team training for law enforcement officers and postbooking jail diversion serving individuals booked into the county jail and awaiting adjudication. Um, the uh Criminal Justice Mental Health Project offers a variety of overlay services intended to streamline screening and identification of program participants, develop evidence-based community reentry plans to ensure appropriate linkages to community-based treatment and support services, improve the outcomes among individuals with histories of noncompliance with treatment, and expedite access to federal and state entitlement benefits. The model, much like the one that we have with Burnaleo County or our reentry and transition planning that we've instilled and then our collaborations with the courts, provide cost-effective, um, I'm sorry, effective, cost-efficient solutions to community problems. And it works by eliminating the gaps and by forging productive and innovative relationships among all stakeholders.
So when we look more closely at what the Miami model is, they recognize very early on that there is a significant overlap between mental health and the criminal justice system, which we're well aware of. What they did is they implemented the risk needs responsivity model in two thousand to make sure that the risk level is informing supervision for individuals and that they're identifying the most at-risk folks in the community and the criminal justice system. They then implemented new interventions at every single step of the sequential intercept model. We're gonna go into that further, but we've also done that here in Burnaleo County. And we're using this to learn and adapt and improve our model that we have. The other key feature of the Miami model is that they restructured, restructured competency in Miami Dade to implement a very strong community-based network. So they're keeping the most heinous crimes, individuals who commit the most heinous crimes in jail and trying to restore competency for everybody else and get them back into the community where they need to be.
Alright, um, so how do we implement aspects of the Miami D model into Burnaleo County? So as Sarah just mentioned, um, they utilize the sequential intercept model, which is it describes how individuals who have a substance use disorder or a co-occurring disorder or a serious mental illness and how they encounter the criminal justice system at at each step. There's five intercepts, community service, law enforcement, uh, your courts. I'm sorry, your initial detention, um, and your court hearings. So your arraignments, your jails and courts, your reentry services and your community connections. And as you, as you look at this sequential intercept model, you'll see that it follows a tree and how each of these lead to one another. So back in two thousand nineteen, we did a gap analysis where we looked at the sequential intercept and mapped out what we're actually doing here in Burnaleo County. And as I mentioned earlier, in your agenda packet, we have outlined each of this, the the different intercepts and what we're doing in Burnaleo County. So we did a comparison and what is going on in Miami Dade. And there is a lot of similarities. And so while Miami Dade has a very successful program, we were able to identify areas that we're already succeeding in. And so we're happy to to go into those and discuss those a little bit further. But in lieu of time, um, we'll go ahead and skip on to more of the model and and what we learned.
So the one key, one of the key pieces in Miami that gets a lot of attention is their Miami Center for Mental Health and Recovery. This is a rehabilitation site that's set to open this year. And that's specific for competency restoration and focuses on individuals with severe mental illness involved in the criminal justice system. This puts all services that somebody would need, medication-assisted treatment, courts, case management, activities of daily living, crisis services and medical care, all in one site. It's uses trauma-informed care to make sure that every single level is built out for that individual with the aim to restore competency and get that person back into the community. One of the key features of Miami Dade when they looked at the sequential intercept model is they wanted to build in diversion at every single step. And their main goal is how do we get somebody out of the criminal justice system? Because when you have severe mental illness, the criminal justice system typically isn't the place for you. And that's one of the goals that we're looking at. How can we incorporate what they're implementing and improve our system here? Um, brief overview of some of the highlights from the Miami model is very strong coordination between the intercepts and agencies. Police, probation, pretrial, competency courts, case management, all work with each other and that diversion factor. There's also a very strong um component of housing, mental health and substance use. We know that here in Burnaleo County, we've been talking about a lot of those tonight, increasing housing, housing, increasing mental health services. They also have the Miami Daid Forensic Alternative Center. Never can remember that one. Which also puts everything for inpatient residential treatment in one spot. And we're looking at doing that here, especially with the upcoming crisis triage center. And they also have very strong reentry and warm handoffs to providers, which we do very well at the resource reentry center here. So that's a benefit to us. For areas for improvement, in Burnaleo County, we can strengthen what we're doing at each intercept. That was one of the features as we went through the slides that we skipped over for you to review. We do have areas of improvement at every single intercept. We also need to focus on sharing our assessments at the earliest level for individuals to identify individuals with severe mental illness at every section in the community and the criminal justice system. We need to work on building a stronger community health network and working in different law enforcement teams. Miami Dade had a homeless outreach program that worked with peers in law enforcement. And they patrolled Miami Beach where they could go in and they do outreach to individuals. And they had a very cohesive unit there. They also train all of their police officers for crisis intervention training. We do um that here in Burnaleo County. They have almost eighty to ninety percent of their officers trained in mental health and crisis intervention training.
I just wanted to add one more piece about how they support their law enforcement officers. I felt it was very crucial to their success is that they address their own law enforcement uh officers' mental health themselves. So they have some debriefings, uh mandatory treatment if there's been an incident. Um, they have found that by doing this and addressing any type of PTSD that somebody may be encountering, their use of force has gone down and their shootings have really decreased. So they're really paying attention to the law enforcement and giving them that that care. And that has been supportive. Um, the other piece that they have, which is really important, is pairing the peers in in those different teams that they have with the law enforcement to go out. So having that peer um presence has really been beneficial.
Okay. Um, looking at the gaps that we saw in the recommendations for here, the first one is to establish a judicial task force to examine the state courts' response to mental illness, looking at more of competency restoration. Here we're looking at competency for individuals. And if they're not found dangerous, we typically dismiss that case without a lot of connection to services. That's an area we can improve on. Another one for looking at the sequential intercept model is looking at negative one. So what happens before that intervention with law enforcement? Again, building that community network. Yeah, diversion and deflection. Um, and then also data sharing and being able to maximize that continuity of care. If I'm working with somebody in the community and I'm arrested, that law enforcement officer then could then connect me directly back to care. And also having the full continuum of psychiatric care.
Alright, so final takeaways that we had, um, is that, you know, there are some interventions that exist in the Miami Miami Daid model that we cannot duplicate, either because we've already implemented some of them, but also because their city structure and their um is set up differently. The population is a little bit different than New Mexico. There are some aspects that proven to be that they can work and can be ad- um adapted and implemented as outlined in each of the sequential intercept models. So as you look at at your packets and you see the different things, we're doing certain things that are very closely related, but there's a few things that are listed on Miami Daid that we are not doing that we're very interested in implementing. Um, we recognize and we have been working very closely to, um, the state is pursuing a closed-loop referral system. Um, the county and the city are partnering right now to have that closed-loop referral system, the Unida system here in Burnaleo County. Uh, Doña Anna County has theirs, Santa Fe County has theirs as well. And so hopefully, all of us getting connected throughout the state is gonna be a game changer for us. Um, we really need to address adverse childhood experiences um and use that prevention piece. Um, and it's gonna be slow. So we have to start at at the children's age and then, you know, continue to work with the adults and start. We have to start somewhere and start chipping away. We had a conversation uh today with APS and they're very interested in partnering with the behavioral health um i- here in Burnaleo County so that we can start looking at that prevention piece, those aces. Um, and then Judge Leifman, he was the star of the show. He was, he's, he's the reason that they're so successful in in Miami Daid. Um, his, his uh opinion is that peers and courtrooms are their secret sauce. And I agree with that. Um, as Sarah mentioned, the system where they have their courtroom, um, that center stage where they have their courts and all those other services, very trauma-informed. The courtroom is set up in a way so that um folks can approach the bench and actually have a conversation with the judge. So it's very, very sensitive. It it's very rapport building. It's a, it's, it's just a warm inviting. And it helps the individual to want to work with the judge and the judicial system. Um, we also wanna build up our existing community health networks with low to moderate hi- I mean, with uh low to moderate high uh risk and needs. And so what they do with the competency is, is that they work with the folks and they want competency for those that are the highest risk. And the ones that are lower, they want them to actually be deferred to community services. So really just treating competency for really high-needs people. Um, and then we also wanna create a comprehensive system, as Sarah was mentioning, for the high-risk needs. So those wraparound services. Um, we stand for any questions and we appreciate your time. Uh, and as you look through your packets and and if there's any other additional things you want us to elaborate, we're happy to do so.
Commissioner.
Barbara, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for this presentation. Thank you for going and figuring out. Thanks to Connie B. Hill, um, community leader, I'm sure is watching and has been advocating for the Miami Daid model for a long time. Um, the old reasons why I've never put forward or didn't ask to even go to Miami Daid is because I do think your analysis is correct. Like, a lot of this, we are already in motion. And what I'm so excited is that Dr. Lindstrom is here and that we can, um, I I keep talking about it as like, who's the person on the hill able to see the landscape? And that, for me, uh, exists a lot in this. And in my three years of of being on CJCC, the Criminal Justice Corning Council, the Homeless Corning Council, tending as many addiction treatment advisory committees, as many detention facility advisory board meetings, ABCDC and Community Schools, right? These places are, there isn't somebody to connect the dots. And that's why this today is the perfect timing for this, cause we have now Dr. Lindstrom that's gonna go. I think it also speaks largely to this, our ordinance and consolidating the departments, how we see and can direct and be a part of making this landscape, this ecosystem work. Because right now, actually, the some of your tech takeaways is there is a New Mexico Supreme Court Commission on Mental Health and Competency. And they are working on this right now with the leadership of Senator Tisa Hipino, who has direct connection to Connie B. Hill. They're working on this. Our courts through CJCC, I get to work with, we have judges that I would say are Judge McDaniel, Judge Leos, Judge Roberson, Judge Dominguez. They are working and they are struggling. And the parts that they struggle with, they've had to hire their own behavioral health people. Because otherwise, they're doing what's right for the courts to not incarcerate people with low risk and not to incarcerate people with non- non-competency. But then that's when we see the news say, well, then they're letting them out on the streets. Because the county who has the most resources for behavioral health isn't finding ways to get them access to the to the pieces they need. So I think those, um, and and through CJCC, we um are working on alternatives to incarceration. Those are the diversion, deflection that you talked about. I know you all know them, but I think for our public to know, right, that that's CJCC, um, is sort of, that's been their priority. And we have those exteller judges that are making that happen even on their own dime when it's not really court's job to be like deciding where's case management, where's peers, where, you know? But they are doing that work and it takes our partnership. I just got a, um, from a po- someone, one of the altern- the specialty courts that has been waiting for oh, like over a year to get the funding for their, um, because they were gonna double their young adult court, which has been largely accessible, successful. I get to go to the graduation this Friday. There's gonna be graduating a hundred and ten young adult courts out of drug court. That's a hundred and ten successful people because we, cause we're doing a model that connects things, right? And so the, um, so I think our responsibility is make sure that funding gets, let's just get them that funding. What are we waiting for? I I don't know what's holding it up, but they're ready. They've been promised and committed that to be able to double their programming. And right now, we're sort of that barrier to that. And then as I serve on Homeless Corning Council, we talk about, um, you know, this severe mentally ill population all the time. It was said like about six hundred-ish people that are severely mentally ill. I learned during my times that we're turning away, we were, and the and University of New Mexico Hospital, who's really the most capable to do it, has been turning around, turning away people because of mental health, like severely. You have schizophrenia and you're using meth, and that's a dual diagnosis and we're afraid of it for some reason. Or there's a stigma, or there's a old practice from the eighties that um turned those folks away. We have Dr. Lindstrom now. And um, I'm so pleased to say that, um, I've been able to push and the county is partnering with UNMH to hold a dual diagnosis summit so that our go- all our folks from front desk to um clinical social worker, peer social workers are ready to accept those dual diagnosis or co-occurring disorder patients and um and not turn them back away, much to what you're saying here. So I'm, this isn't to call out any other, I think your analysis is point on. There's some pieces that because you haven't been able to have somebody on the mountain to guide the direction and see where the gaps are being filled, um, I'm just grateful that we're gonna have that. I think it speaks to the, our our ordinance to try and make sure that there is like a coordinated system of care that the county is best positioned to run. So I'm just thankful for your analysis. Thank you for going there and finding out what the um model is and how we can implement. And I look forward to. This is your work, Dr. Lindstrom. Counting on you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, as wild and enthusiastic as that? Thank you for your work. Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience tonight. Thank you, everyone, for uh your patience. I'm gonna announce the next commission meeting is Tuesday, May fourteenth, zoning meeting at three PM. And also Tuesday, May fourteenth, the administrative meeting at five PM in these commission chambers. We are adjourned.